Good evening and welcome to tonight's Pleasanton City Council meeting. Today is July 16th and it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order and could we start with a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Nybert?
Ready to begin. My pledge of allegiance is to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, do you have some remarks? Oh, could we start with a remarks, please?
Yes, I do have remarks. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Before we address the important matters on this evening's agenda, let us take a moment to reflect on the principles that make this city a community of character. We strive to model these character traits and seek to foster a community culture based on these shared values. Tonight, I'd like to focus on compassion. Together as a community, let us demonstrate compassion in the weeks ahead by lending a helping hand to those in need, speaking with kindness and listening without judgment, and assuming the best of others and being quick to forgive. Now for a quick announcement. National Night Out is coming up on Tuesday, August 6th from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. This annual event is an opportunity to strengthen community bonds and promote neighborhood safety. Engage with first responders and hear about ways you can keep your home, family, and neighborhood safe. Join your neighbors, city staff, and elected officials for block parties filled with fun, family-friendly activities. If you'd like a visit from first responders, other city staff, or city council members, please register your block party on the City of Pleasanton Police Department webpage by July 31st.
That's it? Okay, could we start with a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Arkin.
Here.
Balch.
Present.
Nybert.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Okay, could we start, could we move on to report for closed session? Assistant City Attorney?
No reportable action.
Thank you very much. Agenda amendments. We have a fixed and published agenda. Do we have any agenda amendments by city staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yes, we do have one amendment this evening. We're going to remove item two from the agenda and we'll renotice that when we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda by city council members? Wonderful. Alright, seeing none. We're on to the next item and we do have some spots, one or two up front and over to the right if somebody would like to sit down. The consent calendar is considered routine in nature and normally passed with a single vote. There are quite a few items on the consent calendar. I'm going to start with questions of staff or consent items. Or, do we have any questions? Councilmember Arkin.
Yes, I just have one on item number eight. Shall I go ahead and proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay, item number eight. I just want to ask staff, I have just pretty much one question here. This is an enterprise fund, so it is supposed to be self-supportive. And I know when the cemetery was built, that was the intent. But the general fund is supporting this. I wanted to ask, can, in light of budget issues, can services, burial fees, that sort of thing be increased? Can you make any comments in that regard?
Yeah, great question. We are looking for ways to make this enterprise fund work on its own. Fees is probably not how we'll do it. It'll likely be through a reduction of service level, mostly because we're in a market relative to fees and we want to make sure that we're not pricing ourselves to a point where we're actually losing overall business. Finding that right market balance for us is important, but we will look at this contract to see if there are ways that we can get it to be self-sustaining and self-sufficient relative to the enterprise that's created for the cemetery.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have one on.
Vice Mayor.
Number eight as well. Okay, so, yeah, number eight is the Pleasanton Pioneer Cemetery. For maintenance and burial service contract not to exceed $605,000. So, you've already said it is subsidized. It's not supposed to require subsidy. We took over this cemetery in 2007, I believe. What is the current subsidy that we are still putting into this where, again, it was supposed to be self-sufficient? And what has this cost us since 2007? And would it not be appropriate to, you know, in light of our discussion of budget to... Is there a way, there is the other cemetery that is operated by the Catholic Church, is that right? Is there any chance that they would ever be in a position to take it over? They're literally side by side, aren't they?
I'll start by answering the question then maybe we'll have Zach come up and help to fill in some blanks here as the person who manages this contract. There is not interest in anyone else acquiring cemeteries. They're not necessarily the most financially interesting to people running a private enterprise. What we would, to answer your question, we've put about, I don't have going back to 2007. Over the last 10 years, we've invested between $30,000, $32,000, give or take, and $50,000 a year of general fund money for about $450,000, give or take, over the last 10 years. So there has been an ongoing general fund subsidy to this enterprise. And the solution, as I mentioned earlier, is likely for us to move back to reviewing our contract and the services that we provide. Burial services are somewhat unique. They're not, it's not something that a lot of folks are in the business of doing and there is a proper way to do it. And so we want to make sure that we maintain the essential services and look at some of the added services that are in that contract to see what we could do without.
Alright, well, thank you for that. And, I mean, when we're talking cost reduction, that's bigger than some of the other projects that we're looking at having to reduce. Is there a reason that we have, the city owns a cemetery?
There was a decision many years ago to move forward with the acquisition of the cemetery and to sort of rejuvenate that location and bring it to life as a public cemetery. And so that has been a decision that we've moved forward with and we will continue to move forward with for the foreseeable future. As I mentioned, not a lot of folks looking to acquire a cemetery.
Right, okay. Alright, well, thank you.
Alright, yes, Councilmember Nybert.
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 18, which is accepting an engineering report and recommendation for the 35% design of West Los Pecitas Boulevard multimodal reconstruction. I don't have a comment specifically regarding the design, but we did receive a comment from a member of the public and I think it's worth just bringing up. I don't expect an answer now, it is somewhat involved, but it has to do with the priority matrix for various sections of the project, various phases, and vis-à-vis the grant funding for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. So, I don't expect an answer now, but could I just get something, a follow-up on that?
You sure can. This has been an ongoing discussion with Mr. Nelson and we're happy to provide that additional analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Balch.
Yeah, so mine is on item number three, the charter city question or informational memo put before us. It's my understanding that that decision has been appealed and is going through the legal process, right? So, can staff just clarify, given budget constraints, what exactly we're going to do prior, you know, how far are we going to go? Because I initially thought it was for us to gain information about what the pros and cons of that would be, that action, right?
That's still what we're in the mode to do. There is no technical support being hired or additional dollars being spent. We have a person on staff who's in contact with other cities and who's working through the overall options. It can be quite small and focused and it can be a complete city charter with everything specific to the City of Pleasanton. So we're going to lay out those options for you, provide the costs for you, and then ultimately make a decision about whether we go or don't go. There are land use reasons that are part of this discussion. There are also financial reasons that cities move in the direction of a charter city. So, want to lay all that out in an agenda report for the city council to be able to make an informed decision about moving forward or not moving forward, including some of the costs that you referenced, Councilmember Balch.
Okay. And then item number five, this is the subdivision on Moore. I just wanted to confirm that the city's resolved out the heritage tree concern that was brought up earlier and resolved that to a satisfactory conclusion?
That is correct, yes. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, no further questions.
Okay, so, I wanted to address item three also, then?
Please.
Okay. So, I'm confused on what is the reference to being appealed? Being a charter city, I don't think is something that has been appealed.
I believe, Councilmember Balch, and you can correct me if I'm off, but Attorney General Bonta, I saw news today, it may have happened a couple of days ago or within the last few days, but Attorney General Bonta is appealing the SB 9 decision that was ruled on in the courts in Southern California.
Right, okay. And the decision to look into becoming a charter city has so much more value than any one case and it's really not related. As you pointed out, it gives our community, our city, more control when we are in a time of state, severe state overreach. And it also has a lot of financial benefits to being a charter city. Also, more autonomy.
It can, yeah. It opens up some different opportunities for cities in terms of exploring, yeah, certain kinds of taxation and opportunities to fund local programs and services.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I had one question on agenda item five. And that is a parcel that's 1.4 acre. And as I understand it, they're going to split it into two housing units and therefore, under SB 10, they have a legal right to do that. Senate Bill 10, they can take their lot and split it?
No, 10 is...
Nine.
Nine.
Nine, okay, nine. Under SB 9, they can do that. This went through the Planning Commission. So what we're really doing is taking one very large lot, 1.4 acres, and just splitting it into two. Am I understanding that? Sounds fairly straightforward.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Alright, that's all I have for questions. We're still on consent. Do you have some speaker cards? Some of you may not have been here to our city council meeting previously, so I just want to kind of outline the rules, if I could have your attention for a moment. We're going to have an opportunity for each of you that wishes to speak and has filled out a blue speaker card. You're going to get three minutes and the screen up above will count that down for you during the time of your speech and afterwards. I'm going to ask everybody who's very quiet and respectful for this speaker. So sometimes it can be difficult to stand up in public and speak. So we don't cheer and we don't boo. We're just, let them speak respectfully and whatever their opinion agrees with you or disagrees with you, and then our next speaker will be called, okay? So that is the policy in the City of Pleasanton. I'm going to ask that we continue that this evening. So, I'm going to start with our first speaker. This is on consent, agenda item three, charter city, Ms. Vicky LaBarge. And you'll be followed by Mr. Jane, or Vipin Jane, and that's agenda item five. Welcome, I know you know the rules, you've been here many times.
I know the rules. Good evening, Mayor Brown and council members and staff. I'm Vicky LaBarge, 40-year resident of Pleasanton. I speak a lot to you guys, you kind of know, I'm pretty direct. I don't hold things back. I do have to question the decision to pursue becoming a charter city. We're out of money. That's what we keep hearing, we're out of money. And yet, we are spending resource time to investigate becoming a charter city. Resources cost money. A resource is not free. A resource is a person with an hourly wage. Why are we doing this? It seems to me the number one reason we're doing this is to avoid building houses mandated by the State of California, which we desperately need. Attorneys have voiced their opinion that just by becoming a charter city won't necessarily hold water when it comes to state mandates. This is one of those items that I think we should be putting on the back burner or stopped altogether until we have our financial wellness in this city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vipin Jane, and you'll be followed by, and we have the applicants architect. Are you, you're not the applicant?
No, I'm not the applicant.
Okay, alright, thank you. I understand you're speaking on number five, agenda five, which is Moore Avenue. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Vipin Jane. I live in this neighborhood for more than 10 years and I am here to support the 3450 Moore Avenue, the proposed split lot. As I could see, as I'm living there and in the past, I've seen similar work, similar development work has been done at Martin Avenue and Tennerie Street. So, I would, I am here to support and in favor of the proposed lot split at 3450 Moore Avenue. I have my own reasons for it, like one of them that it's going to create employment opportunities for the construction workers as the lot is going to be constructed. And also, the young families are going to come and it's going to build out. They're going to, you know, they're going to raise their family with a nice neighborhood as it is strategically located near good schools and as well as, you know, the downtown and shopping area. So, and it also, it also improve our community and provide more local business to our local vendors. So, with all that, I urge city council to approve this proposed lot. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Alright, Tony Sabarario. Sorry, Tony, I just murdered your name. You are the applicant. Normally, the applicant gets 10 minutes. Do you need 10 minutes? Okay.
Yes, I didn't intend to speak unless there are any questions about it and I'm just here to answer questions or discuss it further if it gets pulled from the...
Do we have any questions of the applicant for Moore Avenue, agenda item five? I don't think so. Okay?
Let me know if you do.
Alright, thank you, thank you very much. Satash? Satash? Sorry. Satash? Thank you. I'm going to say that I cannot pronounce your last name.
Good evening, council members. My name is Satish Ghor Jaiswal and I'm a long-term resident for the Pleasanton. I'm here to express my strong backing for the development of the plot 3050 Moore Avenue. The project is, will significantly benefit our community along with preserving the existing visual and unique characteristic of that area. I observe this vacant lot for more than 10 years. This development can provide much-needed housing options like multifamily homes or catering the wide range of residents. Also, this location is currently at the dead intersection, so developing this parcel will improve the safety particularly for the school-going kids. For the last couple of years, it was dark and it's a very, very shady area, but now it will be open and people will start living there. It will be a safe area to the kids. Once again, I fully support the proposal, development of 3050 Moore Avenue. Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Alright, I appreciate it, thank you. Thanks for being brief. Pooja Jaiswal. You'll be followed by Sanket Patel. Welcome.
Good evening, respected members of the council. My name is Pooja. I've been a proud resident of Pleasanton for past nine years and I live in the Moore neighborhood area. I appreciate the due diligence that was done by our Planning Commission and I was part of that meeting as well. So it was good to see that the members are taking every step to make sure that they're complying with all the requirements. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for the development project at 3450 Moore Avenue. I sincerely urge the council to move forward with this development as this will increase the housing option for families with young children who desire the close proximity to Moore School. This new development will also enhance safety. As a resident who frequently walks in this area, transforming this neglected piece of parcel into a developed space will promote safer environment, especially for our kids. With that, I sincerely urge that we move forward with this development. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight to speak. Sanket Patel. Followed by Sharon Pikersky.
Hi, my name is Sanket Patel. I've been longtime resident of Pleasanton City and been living in this neighborhood where this proposed site is for close to three years now. So, yeah, first of all, thanks for giving me the opportunity to, you know, let me put forward my opinion on this one. Honestly, I don't have anything new to add from what I, you know, what I mentioned in the Planning Commission meeting. This has been my usual place for evening walks and I always come across this unutilized piece of land. When I came to know about the proposed development, I thought it would be good because the current place seems to be out of character from the rest of the neighborhood. I feel this is only going to beautify the street. Last time, there were some concerns about the density of the houses, but looking at this current size of the lot and looking at the size of the nearby houses, I don't think the density should be an issue. So, yeah, I think I'm in total favor of this development and I would, you know, urge you to approve it. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And my last speaker on consent calendar is Sharon Pikersky.
Good evening, on a different subject. It is gratifying to see we are moving ahead with the West Los Pecitas project. I've been involved with the project for the last seven years and I've seen many different proposed designs. I was a bit surprised to see the roadway now broken into nine separate segments. This is new to me. It seems a bit odd to show a street-level section in the middle of the elevated section, but I presume this was done due to cost constraints. I also have never seen the matrix determining the bike ped priority rating of the various mini-segments. I might have suggested a slightly different ranking. I'm disappointed that what is before you is only to approve designing the segment between Hopyard and Stone Ridge. Despite the lovely alternative two-cycle track design, you will see minimal use until the rest of the corridor is completed. To get to this cycle track, cyclists would have to travel through unimproved segments of the street and feel unsafe to do so. The segment between Santa Rita and Stone Ridge, as well as between Hopyard and Dorman, don't even have a standard bike lane, making it unsafe for the large number of residents that live east of Santa Rita or west of Hopyard to access the new cycle track. Both of these segments carry very heavy traffic, especially during the time children travel to school. This design doesn't even extend to the Iron Horse Trail, which may jeopardize 1.7 million of grant funding. Why not go to street level between Willow and Hopyard, where the street doesn't need rebuilding, and use the savings to connect to the Iron Horse Trail? Adding safe bicycle facilities along the entire roadway has the potential to have great benefit to the community through traffic reduction, better air quality, and better physical and mental health of its residents. The large number of parents driving their children to school are actually harming children's health by reducing physical activity. Did you know sustained physical exercise not only improves physical health but is just as effective in treating depression as the most popular antidepressant drug? Health is also impacted by driving that increases tailpipe emissions and spewing microplastics into the air from tire wear. The high level of motor vehicle traffic around schools makes it more dangerous for those who do choose to walk and ride to school. Making it safer to walk and ride would benefit the entire community, but our children most of all. Remember, a prime reason West Los Pecitas was ranked the top quarter for bike ped improvements was due to the number of schools along the street. After Phase 1 is completed, I hope the city will make it a top priority to fund the remaining segments. Until that is done, the completed bike ped facility in Phase 1 is most... Until that is done, the completed bike ped facility in Phase One is mostly useless. I would also suggest that it likely would be more efficient and cost-effective in the long run to design the entire West Los Pacitas project in this contract. Costs only go up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that's my last speaker for consent. I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for a final discussion and/or a motion. Anybody like to start?
I just have a few comments, if I may.
Sure.
Maybe staff, if I can ask, and I know we just received the comments about the West Los Pacitas, but I presume it's how we're going to eat this elephant, one bite at a time, right? So does staff have any additional commentary they'd like to provide for the public?
We do. I'm going to see if Mike DeSano or Cedric Novanario are here this evening. And if you could give me a minute to... There's Mike. As I look around the audience, he comes from the room. We'll be able to give you some context around how we selected the project and the segments and...
So just to explain, some of our top city staff sit in that room and watch it on TV. So that's why he just magically came out and appeared. Normally, he's not quite so incredibly magical, so yes, Mike.
Yeah, at least the tape play is not as bad now, so it wasn't like 10 seconds of waiting, so. Mike DeSano, the traffic engineer. Good evening, Mayor and council. The question was...
Well, in light of the public comment related to how we've identified this section versus others, and I know the staff report was pretty extensive as to what we're doing and why, but maybe you could add some commentary that would help us understand what we're doing with it, because everyone understands West Los Pacitas' challenges right now.
Sure. So this project, as you can see, started back in 2011 when the first time we started to do the repair of the sinking sections of West Los Pacitas. Separately, we did our pedestrian bicycle master plan, which identified West Los Pacitas as a top corridor from Foothill to Farrelan, so the entire stretch of West Los Pacitas, because it's a nice east-west corridor, a lot of schools. When we started to look at the different designs for the pedestrian and bicycle portion, we were looking at an elevated section. That's just kind of the greatest level of comfort. With that, though, is a reconstruction of the roadway, which is really expensive. So two... A number of years ago, we decided to combine the two projects to fix the roadway and then also elevate the bike lanes. So that combination is what leads to our ranking. There's kind of a balance between the pedestrian and bicycle needs and the roadway settling needs. We have a good amount of money, $10 million plus, that's pedestrian and bicycle-related. But we also have, within that money, that grant money that we received, a requirement to match. So that $10 million that we receive, we also have to match $10 million. If we only match $5 million, then they only give us $5 million. So we have to balance also the amount of pedestrian bicycle improvements we do with roadway improvements. So it became a rather complex matrix. Ultimately, the worst sections are between Hopyard and Stone Ridge for the reconstruction portion, right? That's the bumpiest section. It's also where we have a large number of pedestrians and bicyclists as they go to the middle school. You know, the other sections, I would, you know, the highest-ranked one for just for the pedestrian and bicycle portion is definitely between Owens and Santa Rita. But that's also the most stable section that we have, so that's our next phase. That's the one that I'll be pushing for. It's also really good for future grants because of the number of pedestrians and bicyclists and the improvements that we need. So it was a tough balance between the amount of money that we can spend on Ped Bike and the amount of money that we have to spend on regular infrastructure and how we balance those. And that's where the matrix came from.
Okay. I appreciate that additional commentary. I think the public does as well. And I appreciate that, I understand there's a bit of sausage-making that occurred to get to where we chose. So that concludes my question on it. I'll finish with just comments, which is, I know the water systems in our city have been something that maybe our public has seen or heard about. Item 17 on tonight's agenda is an informational item. It's just an update of the water system. It's actually one of the very best staff reports I've read in a long time related to the water system, very detailed, very accurate. And I just wanted to give some kudos to Tamara Batista for putting it together, because if people want to know where we're going and where we're at in the water system, this particular item at this particular juncture is a very good summation. So that's it for me. Thank you.
I'm going to echo that. I thought Agenda Item 17 on the update for water and all the funds that have been spent since the rate increase was excellent. So hats off to Tamara, if you're in the room, but also for the entire staff that was involved in putting it together. We're certainly spending money wisely by updating and improving some of our drinking water systems, which include 20 storage tanks, 14 pump stations, and over 300 miles of primary water distribution lines. Any other comments before we start with the motion? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item Number Two that was pulled by staff.
I'll second.
Can I ask for a friendly amendment that Item Number One has revised through supplemental material? Could we just make a note that we're talking about the supplemental material?
So noted.
Thank you.
And the second is so noted as well?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Arkin?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Balch?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Okay, if you came for those first 18 items, please stay for something really incredibly exciting. And these are two items you can applaud for. There are proclamations to for Parks and Recreation Month and of an amazing young gentleman who's here to receive his proclamation. So Councilmember Nybert?
I'd be happy to read that as soon as I find my paper.
Just read it straight from the proclamation.
Okay, first of all, we have the Parks and Recreation Month. City Council recognizes the July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month. And the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas parks and recreation programs promote physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity; and whereas parks and recreation creates memorable experiences for individuals of all stages of life through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen programs, senior centers and services, adult fitness and wellness programs, free community events, and beyond; and whereas the city of Pleasanton maintains 46 beautiful community and neighborhood parks and offers over 60 miles of trails and over 700 acres of undeveloped open space where the community can play outdoors and enjoy the beauty of nature; and whereas the city of Pleasanton offers a wide assortment of recreational offerings, including performing, literary, visual, cultural, and public art activities, indoor and outdoor camps, classes, events, sports, and aquatics, senior support services, recreation for adults with developmental disabilities, local history and environmental education, and facility rentals, among other services; and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to our overall economic and environmental well-being, now therefore be it resolved, the city of Pleasanton does hereby proclaim July 2024 as Park and Recreation Month in Pleasanton, California.
Yay. Do we have someone here to receive? A few people. There you go. Yes, please come forward. These are members of our Parks and Rec Department and our Parks and Rec Commission. Excellent. Do you have somebody speak a few words and then we'll come on down?
Thank you very much, Mayor and council. It is a true honor to receive this proclamation for the city of Pleasanton. I speak on behalf of our city staff from both Library and Recreation and from our Parks Division within Public Works, as well as our Parks and Rec Commission. And we are honored to receive this proclamation. And we are also really proud and amazed at the parks and the programs that our city offers for the community. So it's our honor, and we thank you.
All right, thank you. Stay right there, and we'll take a quick photo. And then we have one more proclamation who is a twofer. We have one from the city and one from our county supervisor. Councilmember Nybert, would you like to start?
Sure. Our next presentation is a commendation for Pleasanton resident Connor Lamb. After I read highlights from the commendation, actually, there are two commendations. We will welcome Connor up to share a few words, accept the commendations, and take a photo with the council. Whereas, since the age of 11, Connor Lamb has been a tireless advocate using his voice to challenge big tobacco, educate his peers, and champion policies aimed at reducing tobacco use. And whereas Connor led a movement in 2020, rallying fellow students to testify before the Pleasanton City Council, resulting in the passage of a groundbreaking local law prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco, banning tobacco retailers near schools, and establishing tobacco retailer licenses. And whereas Connor's advocacy extended statewide, contributing to the campaign for the 2020 California law ending flavored tobacco sales, and at the federal level, he engaged with members of Congress to support the FDA's rules to prohibit menthol cigarettes and flavored cigars and e-cigarettes. And now therefore be it resolved, the Pleasanton City Council does hereby commend Connor Lamb for his exceptional achievements and recognizes him as the recipient of the Barry Fisk National Youth Advocate of the Year Award. And now over to the county representative.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to represent Alameda County Board of Supervisors District Four, Nate Miley. Unfortunately, he's unable to be here tonight, but I'm going to read the commendation on his behalf. This is for Connor Lamb, the Youth Advocate of the Year. Connor Lamb, it's my pleasure to present you with this commendation, recognizing you as the 2024 Youth Advocate of the Year. Your dedication to advocacy is truly inspiring. Youth advocacy, driven by unique perspectives like yours, play a crucial role in shaping inclusive and equitable societies by igniting positive change. Since age 11, you've embarked on a remarkable journey, honoring your grandfather's legacy by championing tobacco control policies with unwavering determination. Your efforts led to significant legislative victories, including local bans on flavored tobacco sales and statewide campaigns against harmful products. Collaborating closely with policymakers, you've ensured the enforcement and expansion of these measures, advocating tirelessly for broader societal change and global health initiatives. Your dedication is truly remarkable, and I extend my deepest gratitude for your unwavering championing spirit and my congratulations on being awarded the 2024 Youth Advocate of the Year. And it's signed by Supervisor Nate Miley of District Four for Alameda County, and he is also the president of the Board of Supervisors this year.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Connor, come on forward. So right up there, we'd love to hear, just to hear from you. And at age 11, you started this, so that's an incredible start.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, City Council, for your recognition. And this reminds me that, you know, with great power comes great responsibility. Now, first and foremost, I'd like to express the gratitude for all the people and organizations whose guidance made this moment possible. You know, to Councilmember Arkin contacting me on email and Facebook for making this possible, and to Ms. Nicole Thomas and Tracy Mikashi and the Pleasant Youth Commission for working with me all these years, to Pleasant Weekly who helped amplify my voice, and of course, to Mayor Brown for all the time and support mentoring me, nurturing me, making sure I can become the best version of myself. These soft skills I've learned from all the civic engagement, these are lessons that people pay thousands of dollars every year for professional training. It's been a pleasure being given, an experience that only a handful of kids my age get to learn from. It's these type of experiences I get to make me proud and tell my kids one day, if I end up with some. But I can tell them how a student here at this very spot at 11 years old, scared out of my mind giving a speech about tobacco retail ordinance. Now, I can tell them at 17 years old, I realize that, you know, things sometimes do come in a full circle. However, job's not finished. You've got a lot of difficult days ahead, and right now, my focus is on enforcement. The US Department of Justice has released a court order calling for tobacco companies Philip Morris, Altria, RJ Reynolds, and ITG to have the retailers post corrective statements. These statements are blue signs that are display facts about the health effects of smoking, protecting consumers from lifetime of addiction. Retailers would have to place these corrective statements near the section of the store that sells tobacco products in clear sights to all the consumers. However, over 16% of these stores in the US are not in compliance. And with 200,000 retailers selling tobacco products, there are only 30,000 stores still without these signs. Although my award is a huge milestone, I want to continue to work with the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids to help make sure many retailers, as possible, know about this court order. The city of Pleasant has already passed a strict tobacco ordinance, and many retailers here already have the corrective statements displayed, and I hope to keep it that way. With the FDA reversing the ban on Juul and new technology like Smart Eat Six, I hope to work with the city of Pleasant and the Pleasant Police Department for continued enforcement. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, stay right there. Yay. All right. I'm just so impressed.
Thank you.
This makes us so proud of our young, our young involved citizens. Really incredible. All right, our next speaker, this is under a public comment that is not listed on the agenda. I have one speaker, well, a few speakers here, I believe. It's Tina. Tina? Thank you. Welcome, Tina.
So, I have to write things down, or I forget these days. So tonight, I would like to address a serious issue that is coming to our community. As many of you know, Pleasanton is taking on most of the thoroughbred, horse racing, gambling, and race dates from Golden Gate Fields. I feel that we need to take a look at the impact this will have on our community. As well as inheriting the horses from Golden Gate Fields, we will be inheriting all of their problems, including the abuses, the code violations, and other things that contributed to Golden Gate Field's closure. I feel that this does not align with our values or sustainability goals. At the California Horse Racing Board meeting in May, Jerome Hoben, CEO of the Alameda County Fair, and Larry Swartzlander of the California Authority of Racing Fairs both spoke and stated that Pleasanton, the Pleasanton Track is taking in 1,100 horses by the end of the summer and is quickly building 370 new stalls to accommodate them. I hope that all of the new construction and operations are being very closely monitored to ensure that all the correct permits are being... to ensure that all the correct permits are being pulled and that the new track adheres to all of our municipal and state codes. These include building codes, fire codes, electrical, gas, mechanical, plumbing, health code, environmental impact, and impact on the community as a gambling facility. How does that affect our youth? Do we really want to bring in more of this into our community? We also need to look closely at the enormous water usage of adding a large thoroughbred racetrack, as well as the enormous amount of toxic sewage and waste disposal that needs to be correctly and safely disposed of. According to our own municipal code, the Pleasanton Track will become a major contributing industry to the municipal sewage system with pollutants. Race tracks have extremely complex sewage and drainage requirements, with a new enormous volume expected of 1,100 horses. The sewage includes the regular medications that are legally, not illegally, but legally administered to racehorses, including painkillers, anti-inflammatories, and anti-bleeders. And this is going into our public water system. Further, Golden Gate Fields housed over 300 undocumented workers in housing that was not up to code and hard to regulate because it technically was not rental housing, but part of their work trade. I'm also wondering where the extra workers are going to be housed. Just a minute. Finally, we have the animal welfare issue. According to the California Horse Racing Board's website, the past five years have seen 16 racehorses dead in Pleasanton. In that time, 128 horses have died at Golden Gate Field's racetrack. Now that the majority of Golden Gate Field's horses are being transferred to Pleasanton, we can expect our death statistics to increase exponentially. If we do choose to continue to host this type of operation in our town, I sincerely hope that we do it with our eyes wide open and by the book. I'm asking for the City Council to please closely follow, follow and monitor this issue. Thank you for your attention to this.
Before you sit down, City Manager, are you working with the county on this item?
A lot of the permitting and development activity at the fairgrounds is a county activity. It is not the City of Pleasanton, but we are monitoring the situation for a variety of reasons, including some of the ones that you mentioned.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Before, can I ask the City Manager, we do have a liaison with the fairgrounds. Could we, could I request that we have a discussion with the liaison committee?
We can, we can certainly, we'll see what we can do. It's summer, so it makes it a little challenging sometimes to get meetings to happen, but we'll make sure we get one of those liaison meetings scheduled.
Okay.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Jason Hunter? Jason is followed by Brian Jewell. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City staff, and all in attendance. As Mayor mentioned, my name is Jason Hunter. I am a sergeant with the Pleasanton Police Department and a board member for the Pleasanton Police Officers Association. Served Pleasanton for 16 years, and two months ago, I came to you all and shared our kind of why we believe the residents of Pleasanton should be allowed to vote for the tax measure. So today, we're just here to repeat that message, short and sweet. Like, give them the voice, let them decide in December, please. And then for those in attendance, looking forward to National Night Out, so come say hi to us. Take care.
Okay, thank you. This is listed as general comment, but Brian Jewell? And then Arvind Bahandara? Welcome, sir. Officer, welcome officer, as you'd say.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, city staff, and members of our community. My name's Brian Jewell, and I'm currently serving as President of the Pleasant Police Officers Association. Over recent months, you've heard from us and others regarding the proposed sales tax revenue measure. As we have emphasized, we encourage both the community and the council members to view this measure as a viable solution to our city's budget challenges. As a crucial step in this solution, we respectfully request that you place this measure on the November ballot. Without the backing of this revenue incentive, our city and its services may face difficult decisions ahead. Thank you for your attention to this important issue. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you, sir. And then Arvind? Welcome, sir.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilmember, and good evening, all of you. I'm not sure if all of you are aware of it about the 911 call issue. The 911 call is, if somebody called 911 and hang up, and the other party called, and they said, "This is not there," there is no recording on that one. The 911 call only get recorded where, if there is a dispatch. That means is, if somebody is trying to kill you or hit you and snatch your phone, they call you back, there is no tracking on that one, that that happened. And that happened to me, and that's the reason I want to make all of you aware of it. I reach out to the city police, Pleasanton City Police, they dispatched me to Dublin Police. I went to the Dublin Police, they went me to Livermore Police, because my house is in somewhere in the corner. I went to the, over there, they dispatched me to the highway police. I went over there, they said, "No." I called 911 again. I said, "Can we demonstrate? Can I demonstrate a reality of this one?" And we did the demonstration. We called 911, we hang up, and we, I said, "Okay, now you tell me where the call came from." They said, "We don't have the records." I'm like, "This is a big hole in the process." If the dispatch doesn't happen, then there's no tracking on 911. So this is the reason I want to bring it to all attention. I brought to city, city dispatched me to one person, and I already shared the email. I went all the way up to the state, no success. But it's a big risk. I went through that risk. My family was trying to push me, kill me, I don't know what they are doing. When I called the 911, they snatched my phone, and they ended it. 911 called back, and they said it was by mistake. And I was keep on calling from the background. "Hey, guys, I need your help, I need now." And it ended. There is no record for that one, I could not find a record, I couldn't go to anywhere for that thing. So that's my request to you all, please pay attention. This is a serious issue. And I did offer, I'm an IT expert, if city need, I can do the funding, and I can automate all those things. I built the system, I built the tradings, and I don't mind to donate my money for the city if city need more than $50,000, $100,000.
We actually need 10 million a year, so.
In 10, 10 years, I will have that.
So Arvind, we're sitting, the chief of police is right here. You've left your phone number, may I pass that over to our police chief? Okay, sir. All right, thank you very much, thanks for coming down, it sounds very scary.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Can I just ask that our department follow up with us and let us know what they find on this? Thank you.
Okay, that's my last speaker on this item. So I'm going to close the Agenda Item 21, the public comment, period. And we're headed on a nice pace for Agenda Item 22, which I do have quite a few speaker cards, so I'm sure people that are here are going to be interested to learn more about a possible resolution and a possible half-cent sales tax going to the voters. So, City Manager, would you like to start this Agenda item?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. This has been a nine-month or so long discussion with the community. It's coming to a point tonight where we're, we're ready to recommend language for a ballot measure. It's a half-cent sales tax, which would generate approximately $10 million a year of additional revenue, which helps the city essentially sustain and stabilize the services that we are currently delivering. I'm not going to go into all of the history, but what I'll, what I'll do here this evening is ask folks to take a minute, especially for everyone watching at home who has an iPad on their lap and maybe a TV in the background, or can flip to a different screen. Pleasantonlistens.com is the website that we've set up with just a, just a lot of information about what we're doing here in Pleasanton and why. And hopefully, folks can take the time to look at that, and feel free to always reach out to staff, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Susan Shea, our Finance Director, for the presentation this evening, and we'll be available for questions along with Pamela Ott and others on staff as necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public. Tonight, staff will present the proposed ballot language for a half-cent sales tax and recommend that the City Council consider praising the measure on the November 2024 ballot. The city's general fund faces a long-term structural deficit. Expenditures are projected to exceed revenues in the out-year. The structural deficit is attributed to key factors, including slowing real estate activity, the decline in sales tax revenue at the storage shopping center, the decline in hotel tax revenue impacted by the pandemic, federal stimulus money that are no longer available post-pandemic, rising insurance costs, rising personal costs, contract service costs, and other operating costs caused by inflation, and unfund mandates from the state. As the city continues to transition from a growing community to a mature community, we no longer see double-digit increase in sales tax and property tax revenue. We also have aging infrastructure that needs significant funding to repair and replace these community assets. The general fund accounts for almost 65% of the 240 million citywide operating budget. The general fund provides a wide range of services and programs to the community, such as police, fire, emergency medical services, library services, youth and senior programs, co-enforcement and building safety, and park, street, and building maintenance. Additional revenue is needed to sustain the services and programs. One-time solutions such as the use of pension trust funds and proceeds from the sale of properties will not be able to solve the structural deficit. Using savings to balance the budget will also have negative financial impacts down the road. Please note that revenues from restricted funds, such as the water, sewer, golf course, and housing funds cannot be used for general fund operations. Current and past City Council has implemented various strategies to reduce costs, including labor agreements that require maximum contribution to retirement benefits from all employees and reduce the retired health benefits. The city has trimmed retirement benefits and extended the retirement age using different pension tiers. We are holding lines on full-time city staffing. At time of high service demand, we are freezing several or multiple positions to save money. Some city departments will merge to achieve operational efficiencies. We have taken steps to reduce contract service costs, and city departments are not permitted to start new services and programs that are supported by the general fund. The city is delaying projects such as fire station and other city building renovations. We are also delaying purchases of vehicles and equipment. On May 21st, the City Council approved 2.5 million in cost reduction from the current fiscal year's budget. The cost reductions include 1.1 million in personnel costs and 1.4 million in non-personal costs. Non-personal cost reductions include travel and training, professional services, contract services, supplies and materials, and equipment. In light of the city's financial challenges, last year, the City Council directed staff to explore new revenue options and reduce expenditures, utilizing a balanced strategy to solve the structural deficit. In September 2023, the city conducted a public opinion poll to assess the viability of revenue measures, including a half-cent sales tax, a hotel tax, and a general obligation bond. The polling results showed that a half-cent sales tax is potentially viable. The polling results were presented to the City Council in December. At the same meeting, the City Council directed staff to conduct comprehensive community engagement to seek input from the community regarding service priorities and the viability of a half-cent sales tax. Since the start of this year, staff has been engaging the community to receive feedback. The community engagement results were presented to the City Council and the community in June. In May, the City Council approved 2.5 million in cost reductions from the fiscal year 2025 budget. At the same meeting, or the same night, our city staff also presented the contingency manual of potential service reductions to the City Council and the community. If there is no new revenue source, there will be significant reductions to services and programs. A second public opinion poll was conducted in May. The results were presented to the City Council in, in June. The polling results showed that a half-cent sales tax measure is viable, there is support from the community. The results also show that the community highly value our public safety services and want to maintain the high quality of, a high quality of life in Pleasanton. In June, staff also presented the draft ballot language resolution and ordinance to the City Council. As I mentioned earlier, the City Council directed staff to conduct comprehensive community engagement. Between last year and this year, two polling, public opinion polls were conducted, and the city received over 1,000 responses to statistically valid surveys. Public outreach has included community surveys, key stakeholder meetings, e-newsletters to over 20,000 Pleasant email addresses, and now list to all residents and business in Pleasanton, as well as public budget meetings and workshops. The outreach results show that there are support for the revenue measure, and Pleasant residents want to keep the high quality of services in Pleasanton. I want to mention that agencies have limited options for raising revenues and face similar challenges related to rising operating costs and insufficient funding for different maintenance. Voters in 10 of the 14 Alameda County cities have approved ballot measures in the past 10 years, increasing city revenues to support services and programs. Three other cities in the county approved ballot measures more than 10 years ago. It appears that Pleasant is the only city in Alameda County that has not placed a revenue measure on the ballot. With significant population growth and an increase in service demand, Pleasant must raise new revenues to maintain the current service levels. This slide presents a proposed ballot language. The ballot language reads as follows: To maintain city services and program cuts, such as police and fire protection, 911 emergency response, disaster preparedness, pedestrian safety, park maintenance, pothole repair, and street maintenance, recreation programs, open space preservation, and other general government use. Shall the city of Pleasant measure to establish a half-cent sales tax, providing approximately 10 million annually for 10 years, keeping all funds local with annual audits, public spending disclosure, and oversight be adopted? As Jerry mentioned earlier, the annual revenue is about 10 million. The measure will sunset in 10 years and is renewed by the voters. Revenues and expenditures will be subject to annual audit. If the voters approve the measure, a five-member committee of the public will be created. The Independent Citizen Oversight Committee will review and report the use of the revenue to ensure all funds are spent on services and programs consistent with community priorities. Elections call provides for measures placed on the ballot by the City Council. Ballot arguments for or against the measure may be submitted in order priority by the City Council, or a member or members of the City Council authorized by the City Council, or an individual voter who is eligible to vote on the measure, or bona fide association of citizens, or a combination of voters and associations who are the bona fide sponsor or proponents of the measure, or bona fide association of citizens or individual voters who are eligible to vote on the measure. Staff recommends that the City Council allow individual voters or bona fide association of citizens or a combination of the two to submit an argument for the measure. Staff recommends that the City Council to vote on the resolution, authorizing an ordinance to impose a half-cent sales tax for the November 2024 ballot and destination of ballot cemetery. The adopted resolution will allow staff to submit the ballot measure packet to the county to consolidate Pleasant's general municipal election with the statewide general election to be held on the same day, approve the ordinance imposing a transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and statewide direction of fighting of arguments related to the measure. Next steps, August 9 is the fighting day for the submission of ballot measure packet to the county. Fighting of primary arguments to the city clerk is due by 4:00 PM on August 12. The city attorney will also prepare an impartial analysis for the revenue measure. Fighting of rebuttal arguments is due to the city clerk by 4:00 PM on August 19. November 5 is the election day. If the revenue measure is not approved by the voters, staff will come back to the City Council soon to seek input from the council and the community regarding service reductions. This concludes my presentation, staff is happy to answer questions.
All right, do we have any questions to staff? I know we've heard this more than once. Do you have some questions? Councilmember Arkin?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Okay.
Okay, just, I know we've been talking about this for a year now. So I just wanted to say, with all of the outreach that was mentioned, I think we've done a lot of community outreach, but it wasn't even mentioned, the public meetings and workshops and that, that we have done and how we've been talking about it for a year. So I just wanted to say thank you for all the efforts from staff on that. And I also thank you for adding the citizen oversight committee. I suggested that the last time, and I'm appreciative of that. I think that's an important addition. A couple of questions. Can you comment on the cost that it would be to put this on the ballot? And I know it's a general election, so there's other things that the city has on the ballot. But can you, can you talk about how much this particular measure would cost?
The additional cost is estimated to be about twenty thousand, as stated in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. I think that's important, too. Okay, and I know there was some specification on the two-and-a-half million that we have already cut. But can you just comment on our capital projects? You know, we have a lot on hold, I think, in case anybody in the community has not heard that, just briefly.
Yeah, over last year, the city council has reviewed the capital improvement program a few times to identify fundings for life and safety projects. And some of the fundings that were shipped away or deferred or defund include projects such as the Century House and the Escape Park.
Thank you. Thank you for commenting on that. And lastly, the ballot language that says "and other general government uses" at the end, can you comment why that has to be included, since, you know, some may think that's kind of vague, but can you comment on that?
Since this is a general purpose tax, revenue will be used for essential city services that would cover all the costs related to the general fund. And this language is more of the common language that's used in ballot languages.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's it for questions.
Questions? Actually, most of my questions just got. Thank you. Most of my questions just got asked, and we have been talking about this, and we've had a tremendous amount of opportunity to, bless you, to talk to our staff and get answers. And we've talked to a lot of you as well and members of our community. So the only question I, remaining is, if there was something on the ballot language that we wanted to change tonight, how problematic is that? Is that possible?
It's possible, but it would require staff to reanalyze the ballot language. And also, we may need some input from the consultant. There's some limitations to the number of, you know, word counts we have in the ballot language. It's seventy-five words.
But you can have less than seventy-five.
Yeah.
So something could be removed without it being too problematic.
Yes. Vice Mayor Testa, but that would not be staff's recommendation. It is entirely possible the language is not done. We want to make sure that what we've published in the staff report is largely consistent with the action that the council ultimately takes, because that helps us to be transparent with the community about what we're doing at the, at the meeting. So, yes, within certain parameters, it's possible to make adjustments, but not what we're recommending at this time, because we've published this language now largely consistent for two separate meetings, and we've been talking about a general purpose sales tax for about six months now.
Okay, and I knew that. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Questions? Councilmember Nyberg.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Since we've been discussing this quite at length for about six months now, I've had a chance to ask the city manager and our wonderful staff lots and lots of questions. Questions for this meeting were no exception. I had lots of them. I've received answers on them, so I won't repeat the questions here. So with that, I'll pass it on. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Bouch.
Yeah, I actually have some questions. So, staff, I appreciate all the work. So we've added, since the last time we saw this, a month ago, independent oversight as well as the audits. So with the general government services question that Councilmember Arkin asked, funds from this proceeds would go into our general fund. Would that not mean any authorized budgetary spending that the council makes would be an authorized spending action from the general fund?
Yeah, that's correct. That is how the general fund works. It's about a hundred and fifty million dollar fund for us, and it does fund the vast majority of things that people expect from us in terms of facilities, programs, services. And so what we.
So the audit, if I may, then, the audit would detect that we've spent it in line with the budget authorized by council, right?
That's correct. But what I will say is, for things that are in this list that the community has told us in both informal and formal surveys that are really important, the top two to three things in that list make up about fifty percent of our general fund budget.
Yeah, but, but again, that's advisory to the council, but the council is the budget-making authority of this, of this local government, right?
Correct.
Okay, so when we're talking about independences and oversight committee, is it a correct interpretation to then say they just make sure that the city staff spends according to the budget?
That is correct.
Okay. How is that different than the audit we already have being performed for the city?
It's just a separate set of eyes looking at the same information.
Okay. So how would the five people of the independences and oversight committee be appointed or procured? How is that suggested by staff, that we determine these five people?
Yeah, based on the ordinance, right? The, the, so, within ninety days of the effective day of the ordinance, the city council shall adopt a resolution establishing the manner of appointment and composition of the committee and define the scope of its responsibilities.
Okay. Okay. Lastly, I noted the ballot language says "to maintain city services and prevent cuts." We anticipate the sales tax would raise ten million dollars, and we just obviously see that we're approximately thirteen million is the projected deficit. We cut two-point-five, so cuts based on just everything being equal, right? No additional changes in, in costs, but we think we have a structural, we know we have a structural deficit. I'll acknowledge that there's an absolute there. That means costs are going to rise, right? Faster than revenues. That's the definition of a structural deficit. So, so I just ask, I just maybe, it's a legal question, but prevent cuts is a very difficult thing to assert, affirm, ascertain, right? Because for ten years, we, we may have to cut if the deficit scenario results out, correct? So legally, we're okay with that assertion?
Yes, because we did produce a contingency menu of reductions, and really, it's a matter of how, how deep those cuts have to go. But there will be cuts that are, there will be cuts that are prevented, assuming there is new revenue. This ten million dollars is not a lot of nice new things. It's taking care of a lot of the things that we currently already do. And, and I'll say, there are things that will have to be reduced. There's, there's no question about that, that we are, this money does not solve the problem completely, but without this money, there will be significantly more cuts.
Okay, I have no additional questions at this time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Just a few, and I want to make sure that, because I've been getting emails from residents. So right now, we pay ten and a quarter percent as of two thousand twenty-two. Susan, my understanding is the city, based on the Bradley Burns Act of that ten and a quarter percent, the city only gets one percent of that, is that correct?
Yeah, one percent comes into the city directly. To support services and programs, the remaining ninety-point-two-five percent goes to the state, the county, and other taxing entities, such as bar.
So some people thought we get all ten.
We don't.
We get one percent, okay.
That's correct.
If we, if we add a half cent, we get a hundred percent of the half cent.
Yeah.
So we'd get total of one and a half percent, okay?
One, one point five percent.
One point five, one and a half, one point five. Okay, great. And then, when you listed, you've listed items that are taxable and items that are not taxable. Things like groceries are not taxable, medicines, pharmaceuticals are not taxable. I didn't see labor, so if I have a plumber come to my house, he charges me two hundred dollars, is that taxable?
It depends on the rules, right, and the type of work. In general, services are not taxable if they don't create tangible goods. But some of the labor costs and services may, may be subject to sales tax if they result in tangible goods. For example, assembling cars, right, related to the building of a new car, you know, those labor costs are taxable. They're different rules.
Right, but if he's just doing labor, pure labor, or she is doing pure labor, fixing a leak or something.
Yeah, yeah, it's not taxable, yeah.
Okay.
If you're just, you know, simply repairing cars, right, replacing parts and, you know, and, and doing oil change, those services are not taxable.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is to the city manager. When we instituted the two-point-five million dollars in reduction, can you just walk through a little bit of how you did that? Did you go to your department heads? How, how, was this random? I know it wasn't, but could you explain how you ended up with two-point-five million in cuts?
Yeah, what we're really trying to do is take away programs, services, and positions that don't have an immediate and serious impact on the services that we provide to the community. And so when you see us not buying things, or when you see us freezing vacant positions, which basically means we're, we have a position, it's in the budget, but we're not rehiring for that position, or we're not hiring for it to begin with. All of those things right now were, were mechanisms to be able to keep us in a holding pattern. We're a full-service city. We're in the business of, of running community programs and services, and we're still doing that day in and day out. We're just trying not to, we're trying to really control costs while we sort out this revenue measure. We have a contingency plan. If there is not new revenue, we will move to that contingency plan very quickly. It is, we, we are in a labor environment. We don't get to just do things. I think a lot of folks expect me to, you know, just, just get rid of a bunch of people. And that's not the world that we're in, in terms of our bargaining units and labor groups. It's not how we want to treat our employees who are delivering high-quality services to, to the, the community. And, and so we're, we are on a path to reduce costs, which is what you're seeing on this list, while we explore this revenue measure option, knowing that the alternative is going to have impacts on our community and on our employees. And so we're gonna, the, the recommendation tonight is to let voters in our community to decide if they want to keep the things that they have in terms of quality of services and quality of life. If we don't go down that path, then we have, we, we one-hundred percent have a contingency plan that we've mapped out and that we would be working with citizens groups and the city council ultimately to be able to move forward with, because it will be vastly different than it is today.
Okay, thank you. And then, somebody said with ten and three-quarters, we're going to have the highest tax around. But then, when I did Hallmark, and it's in the staff report, City of Alameda, City of Albany, this is just within Alameda County, City of Hayward, City of Newark, City of San Leandro, City of Union City. Out of the fourteen cities, we've got quite a few already at ten and three-quarters. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There are six cities in Alameda County that are already at ten-point-seven-five percent.
Ten-point-seven-five, you can tell she's finance. Okay, and then, just, one last question. Or maybe I won't be able to ask that. Okay, maybe I'll save it for comments. Okay. Yes, please.
While we're looking at the slide, I just had one question that came up. With regard to travel and training, it's been suggested that training is an easy target to attack. And so potentially, all training could be cut back. Why is that not really an option for us?
Well, it, it's, it's for a few reasons. You know, we, we have a lot of folks who, who are out on the street, our police officers, our firefighters. There are mandatory trainings that have to take place every year for our professional staff. You know, we, we have people out circulating in bigger circles so that they're bringing ideas back to keep us innovate, you know, innovating and, and finding solutions. And, and I think one of the, the main things is that we also have professional staff who, who require professional development. Many of you in the audience, or, or your, your family, or friends, or, or children are working in an office environment, and that continuing education piece is really critical for career growth and development. And we're going to need to be able to continue to offer those kinds of services and programs, especially if we're having to cut back on the number of employees in the organization, because we're going to be expecting more from the people who are here. And so it is a balance. We have, we, we did ask everyone to look at their travel and training budget. We will look harder at it if, as we come into the next two-year budget, with or without new money, because as Councilmember Bouch mentioned earlier, there, there still does have to be belt tightening and budget trimming that will affect all aspects of our organization inward and community side. So none of these are easy. There's, there's no perfect menu of options. But what I'll tell you is, we, we've looked very hard at our internal services over the last year to make sure that we're reducing everywhere we can internally without affecting, significantly affecting the services that we're delivering to the community. And this is the number that we came back with.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I did have one more, and then you're next. I've also heard the employees should put more into their retirement. This is through emails, but I understand from two thousand thirteen, they put in the maximum amount. Is that correct?
Xavier Scoggins, our H R director, she's here. She's probably in the side room with a couple-second delay on the video. But to, to speak to the timing, we have asked our employees to pay more for pension and retiree costs over, over many years now.
Yeah, so the question is about the maximum contribution for employees to their retirement. We have implemented that as of two thousand thirteen. Before that time, the city had a contribution to employee contributions of the CalPurse pension. Employees are now responsible for the full employee contribution. And in some cases, the safety pay additional percentage as contracted.
So they're doing their part. Okay. All right, thank you, X. Okay. Did you have a question?
I do. Thank you for giving me another opportunity. So you, you said earlier that, or maybe that was city manager Boden, that three categories are the top cost burden to our general fund. What are those?
Say that our, our public safety budget is about half of our general fund budget. And, and that's because, if you think about the number of employees who have to respond, they're twenty-four-seven component of our organization, and so it makes sense that it's going to be a larger component. Fire trucks and other vehicles are also no small cost, and, and they do come up on a regular basis, because we have a lot of them to serve our growing community. And so I, I did mention that the, it, it's, it's the largest. We, we can break out the budget and look at how it all breaks down, but public safety is about fifty percent of our general fund budget.
But you said there were three, maybe I heard that wrong. What, what, I'm just going to ask anyway whether I heard it wrong or not. What are the top three costs?
Yeah, the, the, all key cost drivers are personnel costs, supplies and materials, and, you know, contract services.
Okay, all right. Hey, contract services. City manager, because that's one that we get questions about a lot. Could you explain why contract services, I'll give an opinion, are a better option than a new, a complete hire with a full F T E, with added pension burden?
Yeah, you know, full-time employees are more expensive generally than consultant services. And I'll, I'll use two different examples to make this point. The, the, the recreation needs of our community are fairly significant, and we have really talented full-time employees who take care of certain parks in our community. But then we have other parks that are more mow and blow kind of environments, and we have contract services to do that. And so our, our skilled employees are on staff. They know our, they know our sports groups. They know our parks really well. They know our infrastructure really well. And then we have folks who just sort of come in and, and do the necessary work to keep our parks looking great, and we pay for that service. We pay less than we would pay a full-time employee to do that. So those kinds of scenarios make sense for us. You know, the, there, there are a number of other contract service examples, but another one that the council is very familiar with, because we just paid a lot of money for our housing element update. We use Environmental Quality Act consultants to do the sequel work, the necessary environmental review. We use consultants to help us build our, our housing. We use consultants to help us build our our housing element, because it's something we only do once every eight years or so. And so those folks come in, they they're professional staff, they're professional planners. They help cities with a a template that they essentially flesh out that works for your organization, your community, your needs. Uh, but they help us with the writing and um and all the technical work that goes with developing a housing element. And then they leave. Uh, so we pay them while they're here, and then they're gone, and we don't have to worry about them for another eight years in a perfect situation. So uh, you know, that's, th- those are a couple of examples of how we use contract services to try to limit uh city financial exposure.
Okay. Um, my last question. We've heard a lot of suggestions about um pausing the this action tonight, put it on hold. What would the consequences of pausing this at this point be? And we've also heard that um we should just pause and use our reserves for our um the shortfall deficit.
Um, we we are not in a position to um to sort of hold down the fort. It's a structural deficit. If we were dealing with a, you know, some kind of a financial hiccup or a big one-time payout that put us behind, uh, that would be different than the structural deficit that we're trying to address. Uh, and so that is, that is not the recommendation. It's not the approach that's going to be successful uh for us at this time. We we need to uh address our our expenditures and bring in new revenue to be able to maintain as much of what we have today as we possibly can.
Okay.
And and I want to add that our reserve is not high. Um, our target reserve based on the city's policy is about twenty percent. Um, you know, based on the two thousand twenty-five budget, uh, the reserve, uh, it's projected at about nineteen percent. It's already below our target reserve. Also, the Government Finance Officers Association, um, um, you know, recommends that cities maintain at least seventeen percent reserve in their general fund. And we can't go below, you know, the seventeen percent. And even our auditors will give us comments about low reserve. And um, you know, having audit findings will not be a good for the city down the road. It will be hard to borrow money to to, for example, to issue bonds to fund uh capital projects. Um, there there are just many uh negative implications down the road.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, you know what? I lied. So what?
Almost the last question, yeah.
Almost. Um, the, when I asked the top, um, you you said public safety. Um, but what is the annual um amount that the city pays to Pers on our, for our retirement, um, Pers payment?
Uh, the payment from the general fund uh for two thousand twenty-four is about twenty-two million.
Twenty-two million.
Yeah, for all funds, uh, general fund and non-general fund, it's about twenty-four million.
About twenty-four, thank you. And then, so that's for twenty twenty-four is about twenty-four million.
In total.
Okay. And in twenty seventeen, what was the amount that um our general fund? And by the way, that amount isn't the full cost of our um pension burden. That is just the minimum that we are required to pay to Pers. What happens if we don't pay the minimum?
Uh, Pers will come after us, and there will be penalties.
They'll come after us, and there'll be penalties, and it'll cost us a lot more.
Yeah.
So we're like paying the minimum on a credit card on that. But because we're not paying really the full amount, it continues to escalate our unfunded liability. Is that how that works?
It depends on, it also depends on other factors such as investment earnings.
Right.
And if uh CalPERS, you know, has a high investment return.
Which just happened once.
Yeah. The liability uh will will go down, and that means, you know, lower contributions from uh cities.
Sure. But last year, it was not, it didn't go down. It went up ninety million dollars in one year, right?
Uh, for two thousand, for this fiscal year, uh, it increased for two thousand twenty-five because of the investment loss from a couple of years ago.
Right.
So CalPERS, it's a little bit behind in terms of increasing the rate.
Two-year lag.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So the question was in twenty seventeen, what did um, what did Pleasanton's General Fund pay to for pension liability?
It was close to twelve million in two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand seventeen.
And and now we're at twenty-four million, so it's it's doubled?
It's it's uh, yeah, for the general fund, almost double.
In since twenty seventeen, when we say that our expenses are growing faster than our revenue, that's a significant um impact on our expenses, right?
Yes, it's part of the cost um of compensation.
Right. So it's fair to say that that really is one of our biggest um expenses that is rising. And that, do we have, you said that if we don't pay it, they'll come after us. And we have a sincere obligation to our um retired employees and our future retired employees. So it is a genuine obligation that we have legally done everything in our power to control. Is that true?
Uh, that's true, and we have contracts with CalPERS, so we cannot just not pay the contributions.
Right. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right, good. All right, we've got some uh public speakers as.
Mayor, if if I might, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I try really hard not to do that. Um, I I just wanna uh, after conferring with our our legal team and our team members, uh, based on the question that Councilmember Bolch mentioned earlier, I wonder if before we get to the public comment, we might, I might just put out there for consideration for for you all in this discussion, modifying that first uh that first sentence or the first line to re- replace the word prevent with minimize to address that concern that Councilmember Bolch had raised. And I think that maybe is more clear and transparent um.
So we're gonna do everything we can, everything we can to prevent, but we can't guarantee.
Correct.
Wait, wait, so we changed the word from prevent, and now it'll say to
It would say minimize.
Maintain city services.
Minimize.
Minimize cuts.
Correct.
So we can make changes tonight.
We can make, we're within, we're 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 within, we're we're within one word, and we're we're within uh, you know, a reasonable, a- addressing one-word uh approach to things, yes.
That sounds reasonable.
Thank you. But I wanted to say that before we got to the public comment portion of the evening, so you had a chance to think about that, and so the public could hear from staff as well on that point. Thank you for.
That's actually a good.
I'm I'm actually, I'm okay with that. I just, I think prevent cuts is actually a true statement, because it does prevent cuts. But I think making it a little more clear that it's not all cuts.
Yeah, because then you can never.
And minimize might be a better way to word it. I I agree with that.
Okay, good, good word, word worked there, Councilmember Bolch, okay. Uh, we've got our first speaker. I'm gonna open the public uh hearing. Our first speaker is Faith Kelly, and Faith will be followed by Jana Schreber. Welcome. And as we mentioned before, unless you're getting a proclamation and you're seventeen years old, we're gonna just be respectful and quiet. She's gonna, she needs just a second to start, to start your timer there. Uh, we're gonna do three minutes uh as we did before. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Faith Kelly, and I have been a resident of Alameda County for forty-two years. I am a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, and I'm not a spokesperson. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over twenty-four states. Today, I come to you as a concerned citizen sharing alarming information about our state's voter database uncovered through thousands of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they don't add up. Just like your checkbook must balance, so must our votes. If you had ten thousand fewer dollars in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened. And if a company had that significant a discrepancy in their books, they would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, yearly audits are required by law for all public companies. Our audit of the twenty twenty-two election using only official data provided by state elections officials shows that the twenty twenty-two election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying one candidate went over another, or that any election should be overturned. The state's official data from a certified election shows that the votes as counted were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present you with the resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. We are happy to meet with you to go over this information, including more detail about the specific findings. If you have any questions that I cannot answer now, I will commit to getting you the answer in writing from United Sovereign Americans executive team as soon as possible. This data and our request for an investigation have been shared with state election officials and law enforcement. It's essential that you, as our representatives, make it clear that these must be taken seriously. Tonight, we come to you, our closest elected representatives for support and action. We're asking that you listen to the resolution, ask questions if you have them, and then vote promptly for its passage. Your action on this resolution will illustrate your dedication and support to the concerns of our constituents and our country. Our next three speakers will s- will read the resolution in three parts, and our final speaker will conclude our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so somehow there was a mix-up. Really, you should have been under matters not listed. It's not necessarily about our half percent sales tax.
This isn't at all.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Thanks. So uh, we really should have taken you under a different agenda item, because it's not about our half percent sales tax. But we've already passed that, so let's continue today.
Continue?
We're gonna let them continue to speak. Uh, Jana Schreber, and you're followed by Patricia.
I think this is an awfully long meeting, and this is not appropriate on this topic.
I think we have a right. City attorney, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I I think you have a a couple of options. One would be to, if the council, majority of the council wants to vote to reopen the public comment um or to move it to a later period. I recognize too that the two POA members probably meant to speak during this item and spoke during matters initiated. So, you know, that sometimes happens. They certainly have a right to speak tonight. It's whether the council wants to um give them that opportunity under the wrong item or to, you know, reopen or or do it later. So that would be my suggestion.
On this, I'm I'm just move forward, and let's, it is about an election. That's what they're talking about. This is an election, even though the topic is different. I'm gonna say, go ahead and go forward.
I think it needs the council majority to make that decision, don't we?
That would, yeah. M- my recommendation would be that that, obviously, the mayor leads the meeting, but my recommendation would be if you're, if you want to reopen it, then that would be a majority of the council. We did have those couple of other speakers earlier tonight that we didn't stop them speaking, so.
We let them proceed. So we're going to uh, let them continue now.
How many, how many speakers is it? We're gonna be here late.
Six, 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 and they all have a right to speak. Yes, they do.
Did did they identify the wrong?
Julie, yes, they did.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing to allow these next three speakers to speak.
The next one.
However many there are.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's get, let's just, let's just continue. This is taking longer than the speakers. Okay. Yeah, Jana, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jana Schreber, and I have been a resident of Alameda County for fifty-eight years. I am a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, not a spokesperson. United, I'm sorry. The following is a resolution for a legally valid twenty twenty-four general election, whereas it is recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have a free and fair elections, quote, and the right of suffrage can be denied by a debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by wholly prohibiting the free exercise of the franchise, end quote, U.S. Supreme Court Reynolds versus Sims nineteen sixty-four. Whereas, it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion of or manipulation. Quote, Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to a strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved upon him while so engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law, end quote, U.S. Supreme Court in recoid eighteen eighty-eight. Whereas, our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenants of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate, the National Voter Registration Act of nineteen ninety-three. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters, U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in one hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system, Help America Vote Act two thousand two. Whereas, open source audit of the California twenty twenty-two general election conducted by California citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies appear to violate both federal and state laws, including five million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-eight ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. Two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. One hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. Two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine apparent voting violations are in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the two thousand twenty-two general election in California was ninety. Certification, as defined by law, and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been fraudulent and illegal.
All right, thank you. Patricia, followed by Cheryl Robinson.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Beebe, and I have been a resident of Alameda County for ten years. And I am also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans and continue, and will continue with the resolution. Whereas, these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Accuracy is defined as the ability of the system to capture and report specific selections and absence of selections made by a voter without error. Whereas, the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that varies from the law is an abridgement of the civil rights of the citizens. A fraud app initio United States versus Throck Martin eighteen seventy-eight. Quote, from time immemorial, an election to public office has been in point of substance no more and no less than the expression by qualified electors of their choice of candidates, end quote, U.S. Supreme Court, United States, the classic nineteen forty-one. Whereas, the two thousand twenty-two election, general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us in demanding a valid two thousand twenty-four general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship. Identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified, accurate, and available for public review and challenged thirty days before the start of early, early voting. Voters added after that date must prove, have, bring proof of citizenship, identity and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency. Where imaging technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party candidate and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and CVRs.
Thank you, thank you. Cheryl Robinson, followed by Paul Pendley.
Hello, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for listening. My name is Cheryl Robinson, and I have been a resident of Alameda County for over three years. And I'm also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans. Number six, ballots, regardless of entry, source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain. must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witnessed transfer with paper records. Number seven, an NIST compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by a qual, by qualified insured and bonded security forensics of, and forensics of financial auditors, not personnel, from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CVRs, ballot counts, qualified voter counts, custody, transfer, and all other paper, and electronic elections, uh, election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than ten percent of the margin of victory, a new election will be, must be held in the state for those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provable, corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Pleasanton City Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the Alameda County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, Federal Legislatures, Law Enforcement, Federal and State Prosecutors, Judges, and both California Secretary of State and Council Registars of Voters to co, to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us this time. My name is Paul Pendley, and I've been a resident of Alameda County for over sixty-eight years. I too am a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans, and we conclude as follows. What you heard tonight is the culmination of thousands of hours of work by our highly-qualified and credentialed volunteer data teams, data teams from California and across the country. It is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our two thousand twenty-two election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the two thousand twenty-four general election for all Americans. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such actions. Laws are being ignored. The bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing, and we need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? Let's step back for a second and look at the big picture. Large number of Americans, including many right here in California, have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. I think we can all agree that we wish this was not the case, but official data shows these concerns are valid, and the law says resolving them is essential in securing our liberty. How much is it costing us to not fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health, the self-esteem of our children and young people, and how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting with each other? The cost is immeasurable, so we urge you to agree by putting this resolution, resolution on the agenda for the next city council meeting and voting in support of fair, honest, and ballot elections. Our website showcases our initiatives nationwide and has some powerfully informative videos revealing the anomalies and apparent violations of law in California. The website is uniteforfreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. I encourage you to check it out and learn more about our organization. One more time, that's unite, the number four, freedom.com. We look forward to providing you with more information, data, and perhaps putting this on the agenda in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and then I have one more, um, in your group, Charles Henz. Charles, and you'll be followed by, uh, I'll, I'll close the public hearing for items not on the agenda after you. Thank you.
My name is Charles Henzie, and I've been a resident of Pleasanton and Alameda County for, uh, twenty-three years, and I'm also a volunteer with United Sovereign Americans. And I would just like to say that I apologize for the out-of-order agenda item, and just consider this a flashback to an hour earlier. Um, and, um, the contact information is on the cover sheet, and I have no further information, so I give back two hours and.
Two, two minutes and forty seconds.
All right, I appreciate it. I'm gonna close the public comment for agenda items not listed on the agenda. That was Agenda Item Twenty-One. Thank you, everyone, for speaking. Now, we're going to open public hearing for Agenda Item Twenty-Two, which is the half-cent sales tax. My first speaker is Matthew Gray, and you're followed by Craig Freeman. Welcome. Sorry about that little mix-up there. They, they put as their topic elections, and we've got multiple things to talk about today.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff. Good evening, neighbors and fellow residents. My name is Matthew Gray. I'm here today to voice my support for the half-cent tax measure. I'd like to note my appreciation for City Manager Jerry Boudin and his office, who first identified our city's structural deficit. Uh, and to Mayor Brown, her office, along with Council Members Testa, Arkin, and Niebert, uh, deserve praise for not backing down from this moment. These four leaders at the dais are showing leadership in moving ahead with letting our city's voters decide on the half-cent tax measure. I implore our city leaders to trust the voters of Pleasanton. The voters of our city know what is at stake this November. Put your faith in us. We understand the gravity of the moment. The majority of voters are in support of this tax measure. Not everyone has free time to attend city council meetings, uh, but this fifty percent plus one majority is here in spirit with me this evening. We care deeply about the future of our city. Pleasanton voters know the financial stability of our city is at stake, uh, in this measure. Saying no to the half-cent tax is effectively saying no to our police department, no to our fire department, no to our public works department, and no to our library and recreation staff. Saying no to this tax measure is also a vote against having crossing guards at intersections for the safety of children, no to adequate police and fire staffing. It is saying no to developing city services alongside business and residential development. It is saying no to fixing our city's infrastructure. Pleasanton voters know saying yes to the half-cent tax is the right thing to do. Mayor and Council Members, trust us. We are a community of character. We vote our values and ideals without feeling the cynicism or the anger surrounding this issue. We know not to get bogged down in the argument. We are focused on having a positive impact in our city. This half-cent tax measure is simply a matter of saying yes to the city, yes to financial stability, yes to tomorrow, yes to our future. Supporters of this tax measure will vote with enthusiasm this November because we love and care for our city. A simple majority, fifty percent plus one, is all we need. A simple majority of voters to save Pleasanton. Join me this November in saying yes to our city. Put this tax measure on the ballot. We can put our city on the path to financial stability. Leaders, the voters have your back on this issue. Let a majority of voters decide, fifty percent plus one. Every yes vote counts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's perfect timing there. Uh, Craig Freeman, followed by Regina Woger. Welcome, sir, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. Here with you tonight for the third or fourth time, uh, in the last nine months to discuss this issue. Um, again, Craig Freeman, Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department, I'm a fire captain with Fire Department, I'm also treasurer for Livermore Pleasant Firefighters Local nineteen seventy-four. Looking back into April of two thousand twenty-two, that's when City Manager Boudin came in, started, uh, his role as city manager in Pleasanton. It didn't take more than about eighteen months, and just after settling of a couple of difficult contracts, for us to start having discussions about the financial health of our city. Uh, it was last fall, around December, we started talking about what those, uh, structural deficits were, and what it would take to fix them, and this half-cent sales tax. So, we're here tonight with the last opportunity to engage with you as our council on this action, on this action item. In the spring of two thousand twenty-four, the most important thing to the Fire Department, and, and arguably to the communities, uh, came into play when we started talking about menu of budget cuts. And one of those budget cuts was the closure of a fire station. Closing a fire station does realize a potential large, uh, monetary savings to the community, but it comes at a cost. That cost, there's no way to pick up the four remaining fire stations and position them evenly throughout the city to make sure that we're providing equitable services to the communities, to the citizens, and to our guests. You're gonna leave a big hole somewhere. These holes are going to result in long response times, whether it's a cardiac arrest, a major tra, uh, car accident requiring rescue, a house that's on fire, it doesn't matter. When it takes longer for us to get there to do our jobs, it has negative outcomes attached to those things. And closing a fire station for a dollar savings comes at a cost to the community, whether they like it or not. It will become a very real thing. So, from there, uh, you know, we talked about the city a couple of different times, being a city of planned progress. One of the results of starting to have budget discussions is we realized that we weren't planning for progress, we really, really weren't even planning for sus, sustaining what we already have. So, tonight, we're trying to fix this. We would like, and we call for council, to vote unanimously, is what we hope for, to let the community decide what services they want. It will be an issue that we keep talking about, but it won't be in these chambers, it's gonna be out on the streets. We're gonna engage with the community and let them know what we need them to do in November, so that they don't realize this reduction in these important services, both from us as the Fire Department, from the Police Department, from all the other valued community groups that we've talked about tonight, that we've been recognizing, giving awards to. These are all important communities, uh, functions that are provided by the city and by our budget, but these structural deficits are real, and they're not gonna go away. We don't want this to be a campaign issue that we're talking about in here, uh, with regards to candidates or any of the politicking that comes from it. We want this to be something that we solidify our financial future for these two cities, or for these cities. So, thank you, uh, and, uh, we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Craig, if I could just please, uh, a clarification. Uh, if you're out, um, and about, talking about this ballot measure, are we paying your salary, or are you doing that on your own time?
We do not do this on our, or on, uh, on-duty things when it comes into engaging with the public on any politicking issues. We do have a political action committee. I am involved with it, but we operate that completely independently, and we'll get ourselves in trouble if we're doing that any other way.
So, this is on your volunteer time, on your own time?
We'll be in a completely different uniform. It's gonna look like a polo and shorts and whatever we're comfortable in, and we'll be knocking on people's doors. We will not be wearing the uniform you see before you tonight.
Okay, I just wanna be clear in case anybody's watching from home. Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. All right, Regina Woger, she's followed by John Kruger. Welcome, Regina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brown, Council Members. I'm not very good with microphones, I apologize. My name is Regina Woger, and I've been a Pleasanton resident since nineteen ninety-six, and for the past two years, I've been proudly working at Pleasanton Library as a library clerk. Um, I just wanted to encourage the council to include the proposed half-salt tax measure, um, on the November twenty-four, November twenty-twenty-four ballot, so that I and my fellow residents have the chance to vote on the critical issue. Not including it on the ballot would actually deny the members of the community the opportunity to be part of the decision-making process. Um, you know, we're really fortunate to have the quality services that we have here. I grew up in a different state, and the town that I left many years ago didn't have anything like what we have here, and I just appreciate it so very much, and I wanna see it continue. Um, and our community has such a diverse, um, community that the services and programs which some folks deem unimportant are actually extremely important to others in our community. So, I understand and respect the concerns some folks have about this tax proposal, but by having it on the November ballot, the entire Pleasanton voting community has the poss, the potential and the opportunity to take part in the decision. Um, and I believe it is really important to have as many voices heard on this topic. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, John Kruger, followed by Chris Jesburg. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is John Kruger. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of Pleasanton. I'm here to ask you to vote no on the sales tax increase. Let's put it in context. How much does our city spending compare to our neighbors? Livermore, total expenditures, one hundred and thirty-seven million a year. Dublin, one hundred and twenty-one million. San Ramon, one hundred and thirty-one million. Pleasanton, two hundred and thirty-six million. In real estate, they have this thing called comps. What are comparable homes selling for? When your agency sees a listing way more than comps, she may advise you it's overpriced. These are our comps. They're at one thirty-seven, one twenty-one, and one thirty-one. We are at two thirty-six, almost twice as much. There are tri-valley neighbors, comparable population, these are our comps. You might say we're overpriced. I would say there's room for reductions in our spending. Now, you might say, those numbers can't be right. They can. All these numbers are taken directly from the most recent city budgets for those four cities published on their websites. Total expenditures for each city, most recent year, you are welcome to check. Now, if I had found we're spending less than our neighbors, I would see a case for we can't cut. We're already running lean. We have to find more revenue. A sales tax increase is justified. But that's not what I found. We're spending almost twice what our neighbors are. We're well outside our comps. I would say there's room for reductions. I would not say what we need is another tax. I would say another tax is enabling our continued overspending. I ask the city council to stop the sales tax increase and find a way to live within our means. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, come back to staff. Go ahead. Thank you very much. I'm gonna, um, I bet you've got some notes there. So, at the end of the, uh, public hearing, uh, I'm gonna let the city staff comment. Uh, Chris Jesburg, and you're followed by Mohan, uh, Patenek, Patnek? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, City, City Manager, and Staff. My name is Chris Jesburg. I'm a fire captain with the LPFD, a member of Local nineteen seventy-four's PAC Committee. For the past several months, we have all been closely following and participating with the discussions around Pleasanton's financial concerns relating to increasing operating costs and for forecast of revenue shortfalls. The city manager and his team have provided data and presentations to show the rapidly growing costs of operating and maintaining all city departments, to include the Livermore Pleasant Fire Department. There has been no evidence from any department heads or council members to refute these claims from the city manager and staff. Last month, we were shown that the closure of a Pleasanton fire station is on the line if the fall ballot measure is not pursued and carried to a successful outcome. It is very important for the JPA to properly fund the LPFD in order to achieve the mission and vision statement set forth in a strategic plan that this council has supported. We have lower staffing on duty tonight than we did fifteen years ago, despite a call volume that has nearly doubled. We take pride in maintaining a high approval rating from the community despite these adversities. Any budget cuts made to our current budget will result in noticeable reduction to our service delivery model. We stand before you tonight to call on all council members to stand unified behind putting this half-cent sales tax increase on the November ballot. A reduction in the life-saving services delivered by the LPFD will not be acceptable to the communities who have come to expect the quality of life the city has been providing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Mohan Patenek? Oh, there you are.
Madam Mayor and the City Council, I've been a Pleasanton resident for ten years, been working in workday since twenty-twelve, so been with Pleasanton for twelve years. So, I feel like three things I got from this meeting that mainly this decline we have because our ten percent increase per year on the retirement funds. So, from two thousand seventeen, twelve million to twenty-four million today. So, next ten years, if the same rate will be forty-eight million, we are only getting this half percent increase to get ten million. How, what is the plan to get another twenty-four million in the next seven years? I don't think there is any plan there. So, the, in, again, the next seven years, we'll ask for another two percent increase. And stone is mall decrease, uh, decline. That mall has been declining for last ten years. We all saw it. Maybe you got, how come you guys didn't see it? It's surprising to me. And real estate same way. And real estate same way. We all knew it would go up, it would come down too. That cannot be reason when you plan your city budget that, oh, it will all go up, go up, and your taxes will go up. So it looks like you can increase it, but I don't see the plan. Next seven years, we'll again, we'll be same position, even worse, in the same rate. 10% increase in your retirement funds, it will be 48 million efficiency in seven years. So I don't see a plan before I vote in November to increase this sales tax, and I don't see a plan as of now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's my last speaker on this agenda item. So I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to city staff, talk about plans that have been discussed, but if you don't mind repeating those, plans for keeping our debt, especially CalPERS debt, within reason, and comparing a full city budget with a, that Pleasanton has with a non-full city budget, and what the actual general fund numbers are for the city of Pleasanton. Could you, could you comment and answer those questions, please?
Sure, I'll start. Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Kruger doing, doing homework. That's fantastic. The challenge with city budgeting is that you have to compare apples to apples. What you're looking at is total city spending versus general fund city spending, and you weren't comparing equally across cities. So our city general fund budget is about $150 million. And when you start to compare to other cities in the tri-valley or in our area, you really have to look at the services that get delivered. So for example, Livermore has a park district, and that's a separate assessment, and it's paid for from a different funding source, so it wouldn't show up as an expenditure, but we do have an amazing park system in Pleasanton, and that all does get handled through our general fund. Similarly, San Ramon has a fire district, for example, and we are in a JPA with Livermore to deliver that fire service directly. So we're not paying, we're not paying a separate entity, we're running that service here locally. So those budgets, and that fire district cost is also not included in the city of San Ramon's budget the same way that ours is. And so I just wanna make sure that folks have that information. I'll ask our finance director, Susan Shea, if she wants to add anything to that, just so that you understand, general fund, enterprise funds, other investments, and our overall financial portfolio.
I just wanna add that when comparing the budget with other cities, we also need to take into consideration factors such as the population that we serve, the level of services that we provide. Here in Pleasanton, we provide high-quality services to the community. That's why, you know, our residents move here and buy houses here, there are reasons. If you go to other cities, for example, like Livermore, you know, the parks may not look the same, right? The streets may not be as clean as our streets. So there are other factors that we need to consider when comparing the budget with other cities. As Jerry mentioned earlier, you know, in Contra Costa County, there's a fire district. So the residents pay into that special district, and fire services are not provided by the city, within Contra Costa County. That's why their budget is lower.
And I'll speak to the pension plan. To the city's credit, a number of years ago, Section 115 Trust, which is a pension trust, essentially is a savings account that was set up to address those, those growing pension needs. So there is a plan for our long-term pension obligations. It's just a little early in, in the overall system. We did do an actuarial analysis that we presented publicly. That information is available, again, on our city website, PleasantonListens.com, and we're happy to talk with you about it. It is, it is not going to fully address the pension issue, but what it's designed to do is, is take those really impactful pension cost years and smooth that curve, or take the top off of that curve by applying the money in the savings account in a very strategic way across the years where the city will be most impacted. And so I'm happy to share that in more detail. The question about the mall, I'll just, I was making some notes, and I think it's important for the community to hear from us on this. This city has approved a number of projects at the mall over the years, including significant expansion plans pre-COVID, a housing project more recently. And we have every intention of having the mall redeveloped. It is, it is not straightforward with the, the different ownership groups that have different interests in what the future of the mall is going to be. But we, as a city, and this city council, has directed us to, to marshal that group together and to get a better outcome for Pleasanton. What I can tell you, though, is even in the past, when we've approved projects, they haven't been built. And that is, again, not within the city's control, but something that we've tried to foster and encourage change over time. So I, I hear the community, again, no one likes taxes, and I think that this is a situation where we are trying to do everything that we can to drive economic development. It took us over a decade to get a Costco because of ongoing, consistent challenges to that effort, and we're finally in the home stretch there. That project's in our projection. It, we, you know, that $13 million shortfall, without a recession or any kind of economic slowdown, that includes the new revenue from Costco. So even as we drive change, this is, this is an issue where we need to catch up, and this is what the, the half-cent sales tax could do for us, is just create some stability while we continue to make those plans for the future. Mall, East Pleasanton, other parts of our community. And so, again, there's a lot of city staff who've been involved in this over a number of months now, and we fully expect it to be many years of effort. We're happy to talk with members of the community if you have questions. We're gonna, assuming this does get placed on the ballot, we will move into information-only mode as a city, and so we're happy to answer questions that you might have along the way. I'll conclude my comments. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna look at our city council. We've been at this for a few hours. Do you need a break, or can we move forward?
Let's finish this.
Okay, let's finish this agenda item. Wonderful. Okay, you had suggested some verbiage changes. Let's talk about that.
Oh, I hadn't necessarily, I hadn't necessarily suggested, I questioned it, and that has come through a request from, and that, where is it? No language, I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for that. Where is our ballot language? Okay. Let me borrow yours real quick. Okay, thank you. Oh, is it in that? Okay. So the question was the sentence, no, that's not it. Can I borrow yours? The question was the, the sentence, in the sentence, it says, "and other general government uses." And we discussed that, and there was concern that that was vague. We're told by staff that that's a pretty standard caveat sentence, and it was explained why. Okay, we have our, okay.
You see me leaning forward. Mayor, may I, may I address that?
Please.
So Susan mentioned earlier that it's, you know, it's general fund money. So it's saying anything from the general fund, but there's actually something in addition to that. So adding the words "general government use" to the question to, to address the Taxpayer Protection Act, that is also on the November ballot statewide, which would require this language and purports to look back to measures passed between 2022 and 2024. So that's being recommended by city attorneys that are engaged in this exercise with their cities trying to get sales tax. So it's, it's what Susan said, but there's also another component to having that language, general government use in there.
And, and that, that measure has now been set aside by the courts in California, but I think we're, we're looking at making sure, our understanding is it will likely come back. So we wanna make sure that we're as, you know, in a, in a good position from a legal perspective with the measure we're trying to move forward with.
Okay.
All right. Well, I, I just wanted it, you know, the council to have an opportunity to discuss it because I thought it was an important thing to...
I agree, I agree. Well, we have comments, but would anyone like to start with a motion?
Yes, I'll start. I'd like to move that the council adopt the recommendation. First, let me ask you a question. The one on the screen, the recommendation on the screen from staff is slightly different. It mentions the designation of a ballot signatory than what appears in the staff report on page one. Is there a preference?
We are not recommending that you identify anyone this evening unless the, the city council feels strongly about that. We would, we would, we would handle that separately.
Okay, so the language on the staff report is good, and should I make the notation about the exchange in the word to minimize?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, so I'll make the motion that the city council adopt the recommendation in the staff reports on page one, as written with the added proviso that the word prevent in the suggested language for the ballot measure be changed to the word minimize.
Okay. I'm using page four, but, okay, page one is cleaner for you? Page four right here?
Right.
Okay, okay. Do we have a second?
I, I will second that.
Okay. Comments before we take a vote? Would you like to comment? Councilmember, Arkin?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd love to comment. First of all, I wanna thank, again, it's a long process. We've been doing this about a year. Thanks staff for all of their work on all of this. I wanna thank the public for all of their comments and emails, and I wanna especially thank our police and fire. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all your comments. I know, know a lot of you have spoken multiple times, and I appreciate your efforts on that. I appreciate your support. You know, we are faced with the, this significant structural deficit as, as we've talked about, the $13 million a year, and that's if there's no recession or downturn. Our city has made cuts. There, there's not really anything left to cut, folks, unless we go really deep and it's going to affect the community. There's no, there's no doubt about that. Public safety, we've mentioned. We have a safe community here. We have first responders who do a wonderful job, and we have good response times. We wanna preserve that. Our community surveys have all said that is important. This is, this is a way to preserve that in, in facing this, this dire budget situation. The library, you know, kids and the youth in our community have always been a priority of mine when I was on the school board and as a city council member. The library is such a heavily used, I think maybe the heavily, most heavily used resource in our community, especially for children, but adults as well. That's a huge impact to our kids if we have to close the library certain days, limit hours. I just think back to when I raised my three kids here. They're grown now, but that was a resource we heavily used, and I still use it today a lot. And that, that's an impact. And I, I think everybody has to consider if that's an impact that you wanna see or not. Our planning department, they do a wonderful job, and maybe some of you out there will say, well, how does that affect me? Well, if you're gonna do a remodel on your house, add a room, addition, anything like that, you have to go through a permitting process. It, it's a definite process now. It could take a whole lot longer i- if we don't do something about increasing revenue. Our senior center, seniors are important to me as well. We have a wonderful senior center here. Our seniors use it. I would hate to see that impacted. Those are just some of the things that, you know, there's, there's a lot, but those are some of the things that I just grabbed that are very, very important to this community, important to me. So I think the question is, as a council, based on what we know and this information, do we do something? Do we attempt to do something to maintain the level of services that we have come to value about Pleasanton? Or do we make the cuts and have a community that is not as desirable? And, you know, this has been a desirable, this is a desirable city, that's why I moved here, and it's a great city to live, work, and raise a family. That will be impacted. So one can choose to be political and not do what's best for Pleasanton, but the oath I took, sitting up here, is that, and it's actually my moral compass as well, I need to do what is best for the community that I was elected to represent. I believe in democracy. I nor the rest of the city council can unilaterally raise your taxes. We cannot, we cannot do that, and I believe the voters having a voice and a choice is what I wanna see and I wanna hear. I, I wanna hear from you. I'll respect the will of the voters. I would ask that I be given some respect when I'm talking. Thank you. And it's a difficult decision. I don't take voting to raise taxes lightly, and I never have with any of my decisions in the past on the school board as well. But I think we just gotta ask ourselves, what kind of community do we want? So with that said, I'm not gonna say anymore because we've said a lot on prior meetings, we're a lot of information here to digest, a lot on our website, and we're happy to talk more. Our staff is happy to talk more about it as well. With all of that said, I'd really like to see us have a 5-0 vote tonight. I think that is important, if it's possible. I'd be willing to compromise a little bit in order to be collaborative because that's what I believe elected bodies should strive to do when there are differences in opinion. I hope others might be willing to try that if, if we aren't all on the same page. And whether it's the exact amount of the tax increase, possibly, we've talked before about a special tax for any given specific service. I, I don't know if we could do that tonight at this point because of the ballot language, and I don't know, that might take, I, I don't know. That would take a special meeting for us to do in addition to tonight. I, I don't know. I don't know if we even wanna go there. I just, I would be willing to compromise a bit to get a 5-0. So I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but I think this is important enough. Like I said, I believe in the democratic process, and I wanna hear, I want the, you the voters, 44,000 plus in Pleasanton, get, get to decide, and I, I wanna hear from you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Well said. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I, I spoke earlier about our pension debt, and not to highlight anything different that we can do. We have done everything legally allowable to, we have the, new hires have a different pension structure that will eventually soften the escalation of those costs. We have put in place the 115 trust fund to give us a little buffer when the years are most critical. But what I wanted to, I've had so many people say they don't understand. We, we thought, you know, for, it, it was fairly recent that we came to the understanding we knew about the pension escalation. The entire state knew that the term pension tsunami was coming. 2025 has always been identified as those years. It's been escalating, as I demonstrated by what we paid back in 2017. It has doubled today. That's huge. But that is a true obligation. That is, that is part of running our city. That is our obligation to our employees, and it is a reality that across the state, cities, municipalities are confronting and dealing with. And I believe that we've done a better job than most in trying to deal with it. But when people say, well, what happened? Why are we all of a sudden needing the first time ever to ask our community for help? First time ever to ask for a funding alternative? I, I struggled with this. I came to this one kicking and screaming, and if it had gone the way of a bond or a parcel tax, I, I wasn't, I don't think I could have supported it because that's a tax that is, it escalates housing costs, which we can't afford because it's paid on the, on your property tax bill. There's an interest. The amount of a bond is doubled in the payback burden to our taxpayers. This is different. This is, as was described, a soft touch. It, it is a small amount. It is a consumption tax. So it isn't automatically assessed to you. You don't pay it with essential needs, medical, food. It is, it is a small tax if, on non-essential items. So if you choose to buy a large-screen TV, you could pay an extra $5... So if you choose to buy a large screen TV, you could pay an extra five dollars or more, but you're, five dollars on a hundred, so for a small, a large screen TV, you're going to pay a little bit more, but, no, wait. Five on a thousand. So you can buy for five dollars. Another five dollars, you can buy a large screen TV. I just bought one for a thousand dollars. It's not. So I, this isn't going to be as harsh as a parcel tax or a bond. It is, it is a very small, for ninety-one percent, our community survey says ninety percent, ninety-one percent of our residents responded that they believe Pleasanton is an excellent or good place to live. Ninety-one percent. This will help us maintain that quality of life. And it's still, you know, our city manager said, we're still going to do some belt tightening, there's still going to be, but it will absolutely allow us to maintain the public safety services that are so important, which are fifty percent of our general fund. And it will allow us, it'll be, the community won't feel the belt tightening anywhere near to the degree if we don't do this. We don't have the luxury deposit. I, as Councilmember Arkin said, I only sit here to ensure that our residents, our community continue to be an excellent community, continue to have the quality of life that we all value. And I absolutely believe that this tax, small as it is, is what we need now to help us to do that. So I am absolutely in full support. We do need the voters to approve this. And so we can't do it alone. We can't do it without the voters in order to keep Pleasanton wonderful. That ninety-one percent believe Pleasanton is excellent, a good place to live. We need your support. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker? Councilmember Nybert.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, to say the least, this is not what I really expected to be addressing whenever I was elected, since it was not on the radar at the time, however this is the situation we find ourselves in. So I came prepared with lots of notes and highlights to talk. I'm not going to mention everything I have to talk about. I'll keep it fairly brief. So as we heard, the city does not have the luxury of hoping simply that everything will work out, that somehow our structural deficit will go away, bright skies will come in the future, revenue will increase naturally. No, we don't have that. The budget problem is structural. When I was elected, I pledged to always preserve the quality of life for all Pleasanton residents. And I take that pledge very seriously. I think that voting to approve this measure and give Pleasanton residents the chance to decide for themselves is a vote to preserve the quality of life. That is important to all of us. I believe that by voting in favor of placing this on the ballot, it's in the best interests of our community. I think it's a right to put this decision in the hands of Pleasanton voters, let them decide, let them give the direction to council on what our future should look like. And I would ask for hopefully a unanimous five nothing vote of this council. I think that's very important to send a positive message to our residents of Pleasanton. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Balch.
Yeah, so I'll start with thank you for the presentation, the staff worked to this point. I know everyone's been working hard to identify and read budgets, so we'll start with that. With great respect to the police and fire, I will be voting no on this item and not asking voters at this time to put half cent sales tax on the ballot. As a council member and a CPA for over twenty years, I believe it's important, probably essential, that I actually explain why I'm going to be voting no. From my financial management experience, I believe there must be a prudent plan that requires comprehensive solutions. I rarely ever see a silver bullet to solve the problems. I believe in pursuing all options and creating a diversified strategy for the financial health of this city and our success, our mutual success. Because rarely do anything ever go to plan. Many things we do not anticipate. So I'm dismayed that so much of the conversation presented is that everything good, everything right in our city is predicated on this sales tax increase, that this is our only hope and our only solution. A budget is a reflection of our values. There's no doubt I value our public safety individuals in the room and out on the field right now. But our values should not be dependent on a single electoral vote or action this November. So I've been asking myself as a council member, as a resident, as a CPA, has the city demonstrated the leadership and strength to have the admittedly tough decisions or conversations about how deep we are needing to cut and what we are going to need to do with taxpayers' money, raising revenues, and implementing our community's priorities? I appreciate that staff has been conducting the public outreach. I have been doing my own on it as well. I've heard how everyone appreciates the amazing quality of life that we have and I do desire to preserve that, no doubt. I've also heard significant challenges to the cost of living, significant challenges regarding housing affordability, and the other CPI indexed things such as fuel and water. I've heard significant dismay over missed opportunities to demonstrate fiscal responsibility and the need to rebuild trust with our community. This is a hundred million dollar revenue action over the ten years that it will be in place. I don't take that lightly. So despite all the public outreach, I just feel that a deeper community engagement and a deeper community sense of where we're going is required. Why have we not structured a task force or committee to take an in-depth look at coming up with a comprehensive and balanced plan for our budget, looking at the priorities and partnership with businesses and residents? Why have we not cut spending sooner? Why are we emphasizing to people what is subject to sales tax? I think even my fifteen-year-old son is very acutely aware of what is subject to sales tax. We have known for some time that there, since the pandemic and definitely since the conclusion of the federal support, that the budget challenge is looming. Past councils saw it and put away money to the 115 trust, which is now at fifty million dollars and a gift to us all right now. So I respectfully ask, what has this council, the council that I'm a member of, done to help continue that foresight? So as a member of this council, I say our time has not passed. I think we can establish a budget task force. I think we need to have detailed workshops as a council to drive how we prioritize spending of taxpayer money. Let's organize public input to hold structured discussions about what reductions our community wants to see, can see, and what they do not want to see. Let's understand what holds back businesses from locating to our community and going elsewhere. Let's not have a superficial understanding of our budget and our spending priorities. Let's have a deliberate, council-driven discussion and public input. Let's go with a transparent path forward for our community, balancing revenues, new revenues, constraining costs, and reflecting the values. The question cannot be as presented, this or peril, to me. So I'm aiming for a well-crafted plan. And the reason I'm doing that is that once that's done for me, I will be able to look the voter in the eye and be able at that time to ask for a sales tax, if that is what we decide. But today, I'm not able to do that. To those that may disagree with me or agree, I respect any decision you make with that. You may hold me accountable in November. I would expect nothing less. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair, sorry, City Manager Bowden. If for any reason this is not agreed upon to go to the ballot, does this need to go at a general election and when is the next general election?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six. And do you expect expenses to go up between now and then? No, that's a rhetorical question. Okay, let me start. I'm disappointed that all five of us can't be on the same page, but we are the elected body that makes these decisions. We are the elected body that has been reviewing your budget more than any time as an elected official. I've been in here for twelve years. More than any window of time, the last four years, we have gone over and over and over this budget because it's the most challenging budget we've ever had. Because we went through COVID and as an example, COVID, we lost eleven million dollars just alone in hotel tax, just in hotel tax. Even today, our hotel tax is half of what it was before COVID. How can you fill a hole if you're still only getting half of the revenue that you received before COVID? Look at downtown. COVID affected our businesses. The city didn't sit back and just ignore that. Our downtown businesses suffered. Most of them are owned by mom and pops, if you want to call it that. They're small businesses and they have one restaurant downtown, for example. The city, this city council stepped up and we started small business loans. We started shutting down Main Street. And now if you go down Main Street, it's more fun than it's been in decades after COVID. Our businesses stayed and thrived with the support of the city council. It didn't cost us a lot of money, but it was important to invest in our small businesses, not just downtown, but throughout our, throughout our community. This council drives the budget. This council approves the budget. And I've been at at least ten meetings where Susan has been peppered with question after question after question, and so has your team, asking, is there money somewhere? Can we make cuts? What can we do to not have to go to the voters and ask for a half cent sales tax? But we didn't have any other choice. As stated earlier tonight, cuts have been made. They're somewhat invisible to you. Those were the first cuts we made so that we didn't have to cut services. The next one are going to be painful. And I worry about all of our home values. I worry about the community we live in, the desirability we live in. I was recently at Alameda County Mayor's Conference with a COO of a large company and he said, I came to Pleasanton. Do you have any idea just how special this community is? I would love to live in Pleasanton, but the commute's too long for me. This is a highly desirable, sought-after community. It's not only just because of our wonderful police and firefighters, it's because of you and me. And we make sure this is a great community. If I go walking, I pick up trash. This job I do for very little money. It is not a salary job. I make less than minimum wage doing this job. I do it because I care about this community and so do all five of us. So I just have a few other comments. There were multiple issues that put us in this fiscal, negative fiscal impact situation. COVID is one, retirement is one. We owe our employees. It is a contract we made with our employees. We owe them a retirement and we owe them to go good on that deal that we made with them and I will absolutely support that. San Ramon is in a similar situation. They're looking to go to their voters for a full one percent, a one cent sales tax. So when we're here, we're looking at what our choices are. I wish we had a better choice. I don't want to come to you asking for money. I've been elected twelve years. We've never asked the citizens for money. A hundred and thirty-year-old city. We've never, ever had to come to you because we didn't have COVID. We didn't have some of these fiscal challenges we're having right now and I wish we didn't have to be here. But I'm going to support letting the voters decide. And I hope the voters are with me because I'm going to support this ballot measure when it comes to the voters and when that, when that ballot comes to my door, I'm going to support it and I hope you will too. This is what we need to keep Pleasanton a highly sought-after and desirable community. This is why we moved here. I wouldn't live anywhere else and I had lots of places to choose from. I used to work in Silicon Valley. I could have lived in Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, San Jose, Milpitas. I didn't want any of that. I wanted this community because it is a wonderful community inside and out, filled with friendly people who understand, hopefully, just how special this city is. So I hope you'll join me and say yes for a half cent sales tax, but I'm absolutely going to put it to the voters to decide. I will support it. So with that, we have a motion made and seconded. We've all completed our comments. Councilmember Arkin.
I just wanted to make one comment on the, a citizens committee to look at reductions. If this weren't going on the ballot or if it doesn't pass, that is absolutely what we're going to do. We're going to have a citizens group. I will absolutely advocate for that and I believe our city wants that as well. So for anybody that says, well, why haven't you done that? Well, if we are making the cuts, those drastic cuts that we have referred to, we are going to do that. So I just want to make sure that is clear. One other thing that wasn't mentioned, hotel taxes down, but sales taxes down too. And we mentioned the Stone Ridge Mall, which we really relied on for retail sales. And as we all know, we are trying. It's, you know, there's four property owners there, but we are trying to facilitate getting that revitalized. I want nothing more. I have lots of great vision for that. But we are trying our best and a lot, it's out of our control, but we're doing as much as we can to do that. And I just, I think it's disingenuous to say, what have we done? We have made cuts. We've been working on this for a year now. We're doing everything we can. I think all of us up here and our city staff are doing what we can. And businesses locating here, we have had a lot of businesses, Ten X Genomics is here. We have a huge biotech hub. Workday has expanded. We have a lot of businesses that have located here and our economic development department is working on that, will have, continues to work on that and will be providing updates to us on the council soon. But I just, I appreciate everything the rest of my council members have said. I would just like to, one last time, Councilmember Balch, you are the one that is feeling different. Is there any compromise on your part? I am willing to compromise to get a five oh. Is there any willingness on your part?
Councilmember Arkin, I just feel like we should be doing something differently, a different path forward, right?
Okay, so the answer is no.
Well, if you could tell me what compromise you're willing to suggest.
I suggested a reduced amount of the tax. We're saying a half a cent. Could it be a little less? Would you support, what I'm asking is, would you support anything like that or is the answer no?
I don't believe that we should be looking at the city's financial situation like a horse trade. I think we should be coming up with it in a more succinct, holistic, balanced approach, which I've outlined verbally over several meetings. So I feel differently respectfully. I just disagree with this action at this time. If the results of that approach reflect that this is needed, then I would be there. But at this time, I'm just not there.
Okay, now you have the right to feel how you want and the answer is no. I understand that. I just, I always like to be, try to be collaborative. I'm willing to work with the rest of my council. And like we all said, we want, we all want what's best for Pleasanton. I think we just have a difference and I wish we could all work together to get to a five oh. I think that would be important, but in light of your answer, I guess that's not possible. Respectfully so.
All right, let's take a vote. Thank you. Thank you for your wrap up. Could we take a vote, please?
Councilmembers Nybert.
Aye.
Testa.
Aye.
Arkin.
Aye.
Balch.
No.
Mayor Brown.
Aye.
The motion passes four one.
Okay, and that was the minimum to go to the ballot. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back.
All right, welcome back to our Pleasanton City Council meeting. As I said earlier, it is July 16th and this is the continuation of our meeting. We have one primary or public hearing matter on our agenda left, and that is Agenda Item 23. City Manager Bowden, would you introduce this item?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For Item 23 this evening, we have a residential development application in an unincorporated part of Alameda County, but happens to be bordered on essentially three sides, all four sides if you include 680 with the city of Pleasanton. So, this is an application that's been a long time in the making. I'm going to hand it over to our senior planner Eric Lucchini to do the presentation, or make the presentation this evening. Melinda Dennis, our Planning and Permit Center manager, has also been heavily involved, as well as Alan Clark from Community Development and a team from our City Attorney's Office to help to bring you the materials this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric and we'll get into the presentation.
Great, thank you Jerry, appreciate it, and good evening Mayor and Council. As Jerry mentioned, tonight the council is requested to take the following actions on an application made by Foothill Boulevard Holding Company LLC on four parcels generally located at 4131 and 4141 Foothill Road. Those actions include adopting resolutions to approve a CEQA Section 15183 Consistency Checklist pursuant to the Housing Element Update FEIR, the initiation of the LAFCO annexation process for the project site, a vesting tentative map, and an affordable housing agreement. Additionally, the council is being asked to introduce ordinances and waive the first readings to approve a PUD development plan and a pre-annexation and development agreement as part of the project. Inclusive of those requested actions, the council is required to affirm the CEQA section document and appropriately determine whether or not it adequately addresses the project's environmental impacts, reducing them to less than significant through the implementation of recommended mitigation measures. Additionally, to confirm that the proposed PUD plan and vesting tentative map are consistent with the project site's general plan designation, which allows for residential development at a maximum density of two residential units per acre, plus a density bonus, and that the project site's pre-zoning classification, which requires conformance with the city's housing element requirements. And then lastly, the council is asked to affirm that the affordable housing agreement complies with the provision of the city's inclusionary zoning ordinance, or IZO. Just for some locational context, as shown on this slide, the approximately 46-acre project site is comprised of four parcels and is located on the east side of Foothill Road, approximately a quarter mile south of Foothill High School. Topographically, the site is relatively flat at the western edge adjacent to Foothill Road, and then drops off significantly approximately 60 feet in elevation moving across the site in eastward direction and all the way down to its midway point. And then the site continues to drop more gradually as you move eastward towards I-680. Additionally, the existing Marilyn Murphy Kane Trail currently terminates at the southeast corner of this project site, and the site itself is mostly vacant with the exception of two existing single-family residences, one of which will be retained by this project, and two to three outbuildings previously used for agricultural purposes. And then lastly, there are some remnants of a former orchard that occupied the site. The details of the project consist of a PUD development plan, including a 111-lot residential subdivision, including an age-qualified community with 92 single-family detached homes, 18 affordable senior courtyard detached and duet-style homes, one existing single-family residence, and one related on and off, excuse me, and related on and off-site improvements. The site plan has been designed to allow access solely from Foothill Road to reduce automobile traffic into the existing neighborhoods to the north and the south. A primary looped internal street with both small side streets and motor courts off of that looped street provide access to all residential units and the clubhouse. Pedestrian access would be provided throughout the project site, and the project would also include five-foot wide sidewalks on both sides of all interior streets to ensure that pedestrians have a continuous route throughout the community. Residents would also have pedestrian access to the neighboring communities at Fernwood Way and Eastwood Way and at Foothill Knowles via the proposed Marilyn Murphy Kane Trail extension that I just mentioned. It is anticipated that lots 1 through 84 would be developed by the applicant, with lots 85 and 88 would be held back to remain vacant for future custom or semi-custom single-family detached residences. Lot 89, as I mentioned, would be retained with an existing single-family residence, and that's currently under the ownership of the Merritt family. Parcels A through G would be common area parcels and serve various functions. Of note, parcel C is for the clubhouse and recreation center. Parcel F is partially for the previously mentioned trail extension, which runs along the east, or the rear of the site in a north to, excuse me, a south and north orientation from the Foothill Knowles neighborhood to the Mirwood neighborhood. The PUD development plan itself establishes minimum site development standards for lots 1 through 84, and those include minimum lot area, minimum setbacks, minimum floor area ratio, maximum building heights, accessory structure setbacks, et cetera. For the custom and semi-custom lots, the applicant has prepared design guidelines and development standards, and those would establish a similar set of development standards, as well as architectural design guidelines for those lots. Regarding parking, the project proposes a total of 597 parking spaces, which is approximately 5.4 spaces per unit. Each residential unit would include a two-to-four car garage and would most likely include a driveway that would accommodate a minimum of two cars additionally on the site. As part of that 597 spaces, 177 of those spaces would be for guest parking, equating to approximately 1.6 guest parking spaces per unit. A little bit about the Foothill Road improvements proposed with the project. As the council knows, Foothill Road is a north-south arterial that forms the western boundary of the project site. The project proposes to widen Foothill Road and add certain vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian improvements, both along and beyond the north and south boundaries of the project frontage, which is consistent with the city's complete streets and bicycle master plan. More specifically, the planned improvements include, one, the widening of Foothill Road to provide deceleration lanes and turn pockets; secondly, continuous bike lanes, including installing a six-foot wide bike lane with two-foot stripe buffer lanes where feasible, and to close existing gaps in those amenities; three, building a new retaining wall along Foothill Road; and four, constructing drainage improvements that will benefit the project site, as well as the adjoining Prairie Court and Foothill Knowles neighborhoods to the south. Regarding architecture and floor plans, all new market rate units would be production homes designed in seven distinct architectural styles over eight floor plans, which would yield approximately 17 distinct elevations throughout the project. All plans which range in height between 25 and 32 feet are primarily single-story units, although some plans do include second-story pop-up options that would provide a bonus room, an office, or a guest bedroom in those units. These second-story pop-ups are all positioned towards the front of the respective plans, and all windows are oriented to the front or side to maintain privacy for all adjoining neighbors to the rear. Additionally, the new market rate units would be approximately 2,300 to 4,300 square feet in size. There would be numerous options provided to the buyer, which would help provide flexibility in their living spaces, including detached and attached casitas, and detached and attached accessory dwelling units. In particular, plans 3, 4, and 5 have optional interior ADUs as well, which would provide the opportunity for multi-generational living for adults, or also to provide accommodations for caregivers. The architecture provides an eclectic mix of styles, including French, modern farmhouse, Sonoma Spanish, and traditional farmhouse. These designs also incorporate a mixture of site entry garages, as well as front-loaded garages, which would help enhance the street scene. Regarding the BMR units or the below-market rate units, there are two plan options that would be available, and those sizes range approximately 1,300 to 1,400 square feet in area, and they all have two-car garages. Their architectural design styles and their finishes would all be the same as the market rate units. And then just for some reference, this slide provides some of the examples of the proposed architecture for the project. The full complement of architectural finishes and floor plans are available to the council in the agenda report, and also in Attachment 6. The next few slides kind of include a series of key view simulations that were provided by the applicant, which helped demonstrate how the project would fit into the existing neighborhood fabric, as well as the aesthetic changes that are expected to take place along the Foothill Road frontage. And again, the complete series of view simulations are available in the agenda report and in Attachment 6. This shot here is looking east from Foothill Road into the, down into the project site's private entryway. As can be seen here, the project entry includes enhanced paving and ornamental landscaping, with several new trees lining the project frontage and down the private road. This view here is of the project site looking northbound along Foothill Road. The project is on the right in this shot, and shows how the project would make transitions with the existing neighborhoods, and this shot in particular shows the transition with the immediately adjacent Prairie Court neighbor along Foothill Road, and also demonstrates the typical visibility of the new units with the proposed 50-foot setback that's mentioned in the agenda report. And then this, that 50-foot setback would be run the entirety of both the northern and southern boundaries of the site. This shot additionally shows the approximately eight-foot tall sound wall that is to be installed along Foothill Road, and generally, this also shows some of the bicycle and pedestrian improvements that would go in as part of the project. This particular shot shows the typical transition from the existing streets that are stubbed into the project site currently, and this would be the typical treatment, usually a fence of some sort. There would be no through traffic from the existing neighborhoods or the project flooding in either direction. There would be some pedestrian access available at some of these stubs streets. This one in particular is at the Eastwood Way terminus at the project site, and this is also where the Marilyn Murphy Kane Trail extension would punch out on the north side. And again, these stubs would generally be fenced in this context. Some of them are designed, however, to provide emergency vehicle access into the project site. And then just lastly, for a little bit of a pretty picture here, this view simulation shows what the proposed trail extension could look like coming from the Foothill Knowles neighborhood, traveling north on that trail extension, or, excuse me, from the Foothill Knowles neighborhood traveling north to the Mirwood neighborhood. Okay, staff notes, the full project details are available in the agenda report, as well as Attachment 6 and 7, so tonight I'm going to focus my analysis on just a few of the topics that are covered in the agenda report. Specifically, it will be these four that are listed here, and each one will be covered with a dedicated slide. So regarding general plan and zoning, the site has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential and housing element sites overlay, which does permit residential uses, and thus this project would be consistent with those land use designations. As detailed in the agenda report, the city's housing element does identify this project site as Area 22, which allows up to two residential units per acre, plus a 20% density bonus under senior housing state density bonus law. So that would yield a total maximum number of units for 112 possible. This project, as I mentioned, consists of 93 base units and 18 below-market rate units, totaling an allowable number of 111 units, and resulting in an acceptable base density of two units per dwelling, or two units per acre. So therefore, again, the project does conform with the general plan density requirements. Staff also notes that the agenda report details how the project supports numerous general plan policies and goals, and I won't list the 30-some policies and goals, but you can see those in the agenda report as well. Regarding zoning, the city council approved the pre-zoning of the project site in December of 2023, and that pre-zoning designation changed from planning and development low-density residential to planning and development low-density residential and housing opportunity zone. The approved uses for the project site include attached and detached single-family residential development up to two dwelling units per acre, and thus the proposed project conforms with those current pre-zoning designations. Regarding traffic and circulation, the Housing Element Update FEIR indicated that development consistent with the Housing Element Update is not forecasted to generate transit, roadway, bicycle, or pedestrian uses that would exceed the capacity of area facilities to serve that demand. The Housing Element Update FEIR concluded that because development consistent with the Housing Element Update would be subject to applicable state, regional, and city guidelines, standards, and specifications related to the service standards. A traffic impact assessment memo was completed for this project, and the project was included among the sites evaluated in the Housing Element FEIR's transportation study also, which analyzed and established mitigation measures to the extent possible to mitigate traffic and circulation issues for the housing element sites. The city traffic engineer has reviewed the project and has determined that no additional traffic analysis would be required. The project is for an all-age-restricted senior development, which typically has a lower trip generation rate by approximately one-half than the traditional residential development, and thus results in a lower vehicle volume to the 91 single-family homes that were originally contemplated in the city's general plan for this site. More specifically, the project's 111 homes would produce around 440 daily trips compared to 860 trips as produced by 91 non-age-restricted homes. Additionally, the age-restricted residents tend to avoid travel in the peak hours, electing to drive outside of the busiest hours of the day, and in the PM-peak hour, which is 5:00 to 6:00 PM, approximately 40 trips will be taken, with 18 of the 40 trips leaving the development and approximately 22 trips entering the development. Similar patterns exist in the AM-peak hour, which is 7:00 to 8:00 AM. This data comes from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Handbook, which is a standard for estimating trips throughout the country and is based on data collection for similar age-restricted developments. To verify that, the rates are valid for Pleasanton. The applicant hired Fair and Peers Transportation Consultants to count the vehicles entering and leaving the Ironwood Development, which is another age-restricted development located off Bush Road here in Pleasanton. The Fair and Peers report confirmed that those rates in the IT handbook are applicable to Pleasanton. The traffic impact assessment memo did not identify any mitigation measures for the project that would be required to provide the design installation of all required improvements on Foothill Road, including, but not limited to, a left turn pocket from southbound Foothill Road into the proposed project, a left turn pocket from northbound Foothill Road into Equus Court, a six-foot wide bike lane in both directions, and a six-foot wide bike lane along the frontage that would connect with the existing sidewalk network on the east side of Foothill Road, to the north and south of the proposed project frontage. Finally, the project has been conditioned to pay all applicable city and tri-valley regional traffic impact fees, which would help fund future traffic improvements to regional roadways. Additionally, the Housing Element Update FEIR imposes mitigation measures that would be applied to the project and would be implemented through conditions of approval in this case. Beyond the analysis that was provided in the agenda report, the planning commission and members of the public expressed concerns about the difficulty and safety for residents making turns onto Foothill Road. Accordingly, the planning commission requested that staff provide some additional analysis to the council regarding the addition of a traffic signal in the vicinity of the project. That analysis was provided to the council in a supplemental information memo, and you should have it there on the dais in a hard copy as well. In short, that memorandum prepared by the city's traffic engineer, Mike Tesano, concluded that the project's improvements to Foothill Road would provide sufficient site distance due primarily to widening and gently straightening the curve on Foothill Road in that area, that when coupled with the project's reduced traffic volumes do not warrant a traffic signal at the project entrance. That said, because of age-restricted residents may still desire increased traffic safety measures, the memorandum does recommend requiring the installation of a radar speed sign in both the northbound and southbound direction on Foothill Road, which is intended to help slow traffic and increase the time and spacing between vehicles, thereby increasing the safety of vehicles entering and exiting the project site. Then, upon completion of construction, staff is recommending that we reevaluate the site distance and delay for motorists in the AM and PM peak hours. If it is determined that the left turn delay average is found to be greater than four minutes per vehicle, then the city's traffic engineer would elevate the priority of a new traffic signal at the intersection of Foothill Road and the Mirwood Drive-South intersection. Shifting gears a little bit here, moving on to the affordable housing agreement that's proposed with the project. As the council may know, Chapter 17.44 of the city's municipal code, which is the IZO, requires new single-family residential projects of 15 units or more, that include 15 units or more, provide at least 20% of the project's dwelling units to be affordable to very low, low, and/or moderate-income households. For this project, the applicant is proposing to conform to the IZO by providing 18 or 20% affordable units to moderate-income households at 120% AMI. These restricted units are two-bedroom, alley-loaded, and are courtyard-detached and duet-style homes, which are dispersed in clusters throughout the project site, and would feature the same exterior finishes and amenities as those planned for the market rate units. The applicant is also proposing to further expand the affordability component of the project by providing a minimum of four ADUs. While the ADUs are not required to be rented or sold at affordable levels, and do not count against the city's requirements under the IZO, the ADUs are considered affordable by design and do provide a beneficial increment of relative affordable housing for the city. Additionally, per PMC Section 17.44.080, the Affordable Housing Agreement, or AHA, must be reviewed by both the planning commission and the city council, with the city council providing the final approval of the AHA. The planning commission has forwarded a positive recommendation to the council for that item. Moving on to the development agreement for the project, as described in the agenda report, the development agreement between the city and developer is proposed, and on this slide we have listed the key negotiated terms of the draft DA, and that's how it is presented to the council in Attachment 4. Running through these very quickly, the term of the DA would be for 10 years with the potential for extensions by the city manager. It would allow for a vesting of fees in place at the time of the proposed project approval. It does allow for the deferred payment of city impact fees to the final inspection for each of the respective units in the project, excluding third-party fees such as ESRSD or Zone 7. There are no fee credits that are to be provided to the applicant for this project, and those typically would have been requested or could have been requested for the construction of the trail extension and/or the Foothill Road improvements beyond the project frontage. The applicant has also agreed to not only construct the trail extension, but to take on the annual maintenance of that trail extension, as well as to construct the bike and ped improvements along Foothill Road, which I mentioned earlier. And lastly, the applicant has agreed to make a $1 million contribution to public safety, facility, and equipment, and that will be broken out over a period of time as specified in the DA. Based on these terms, staff has determined that the city will receive at least equitable financial and other public benefits over the initial term of the DA compared to the value of the terms that are to the benefit of the developer. In particular, the city would secure additional multimodal improvements along Foothill Boulevard and within the project in the form of a trail extension, and would receive direct financial contribution in the amount of $1 million to help support the provision of needed public safety improvements and equipment, and would also receive payment of capital facilities fees and transportation impact fees to help offset the demands created on the city facilities by the incremental addition of this project. And then finally, and although onsite affordability is the goal of the IZO, staff would like to note that there is a positive financial benefit to the city by the applicant providing onsite affordable units for sale. So accordingly, and in line with the planning commission's recommendation on the development agreement, staff is supportive and is recommending the council approve that item. Okay, so to conclude and summarize, just in accordance with the analysis presented tonight and in the agenda report, the project is consistent with the density and land uses allowed for and the pre-zoned uses of the project site. Per the planning commission and staff's recommendation, the proposed project would be consistent and compatible with the site development standards imposed on surrounding residential development to the north and the south. The project provides 110 new residential units, including 18 affordable residential units, which assists the city in meeting its housing goals. As described in both the agenda report and staff's presentation, staff finds the project design, site plan, architecture, and overall landscaping in open space to be attractive and complimentary to the surrounding neighborhoods, and the project does, and staff is supportive of the pre-annexation and the development agreement, as well as the affordable housing agreement. So with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution, adopting the CEQA Section 15183 Consistency Checklist, that we adopt a resolution approving the initiation of the annexation process, that the council finds the proposed PUD development plan is consistent with the general plan in the PUD zoning, that the council introduces an ordinance and waives a first reading for the PUD approval, as well as an ordinance and waive the first reading for approval of the pre-annexation and development agreement. And then lastly, to adopt a resolution approving the affordable housing agreement. Just real quickly before I conclude, there are several key members of staff here in attendance tonight to help address questions, as well as key members of the applicant team, which include Jim Summers of the Foothill Boulevard Holding Company, Patrick Costanzo of PCJ Real Estate Advisors, and Matthew Gray from the Perkins Coie Law Firm. And then just lastly, staff does want to reiterate that there were two supplemental memos provided to the council, as well as a Q&amp;A document, and any public comments that came in subsequent to the publishing of the staff report were also forwarded to the council under separate cover. And that will conclude my very long-winded presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
So, just a quick question, you do have Agenda 23 PUD track conditions of approval modifications?
Correct, that was also sent to the council under separate cover under one of the supplemental memos, so those intended conditions are cleanups and some administrative rewording and reformatting of some conditions that were either omitted by staff accidentally, or just to clarify timing on some of the provisions and where those would kick in as part of the project.
So the project moves forward, you want those incorporated?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Lots of information, any questions? Okay.
Okay. All right, well, for the record, I, as I think everyone up here, did meet with the applicants and got many of our questions and concerns answered, so there's a lot that I don't need to address here now. Did I understand you correctly that on the ADUs that it would be multi-generational living, could you explain that? There's still a 55 requirement on those units, isn't there?
That's correct, so, but you may have mothers and living with their sons who are 55 and over, I mean, there could be older parents and things like that, so.
Okay, so there could not be an 18-year-old son?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought I had heard, and I just wanted to confirm that, great. And there are only four ADUs that are in the project, but there's option for almost any unit to have an additional, yeah?
That's correct.
Okay. Which I think caregiver units are wonderful in a project like this. Could, when we watched, when I watched the planning commission meeting on this topic, and there was, there were a lot more speakers in the room, I think, for that, but, which means that a lot of questions were satisfied, but there was a lot of concern, and remains concern, I think, traffic and, traffic and drainage, flooding were the two outstanding concerns that I continued to hear, so I know we're going to be addressing that, especially the flooding. I want myself and everyone to feel comfortable with that. But on traffic, there were a lot of residents in the neighboring neighborhoods that said during peak hours- during peak hours, Foothill is gridlocked, an emergency vehicle wouldn't be able to get in or out, but there are three emergency outlets, right?
That's correct, yes.
Could explain how that works? I saw the gate there. The gate is locked, so how does, and how quickly, and how in an emergency, does an emergency vehicle get through those exits? Should I wait until the applicants are up?
My experience with those types of facilities is that the fire departments are usually equipped with some sort of Knox-Box key or some sort of remote entry point, so those are remotely monitored by those services, and I'm not positive that the police department has that same capability, but with fire, at least, I know that those are remotely monitored and they have access through the gates by that means.
That was my understanding, so thank you for that. So it is a pretty clean, easy, you know, emergency, it's not going to be quick, go find a key, it's going to be, we can do this. Okay, all right. And, you know, that's all I have for right now. I'm anxious to hear from residents.
Okay, and residents, yeah, anyone else have questions?
I have a couple of questions, if I may, and thank you very much for describing the Foothill improvements, because that was something, I know the staff report did it, but even in the presentation did. Let me ask this, the traffic signals and the additional recommendations by the traffic engineer, did the applicant agree to those? Has that been resolved out before we're here now?
The applicant received that information in a very similar timeframe that the council did, so I have actually not had a chance to catch up with them on that, but I assume that they may address that as part of their presentation tonight.
Okay, I'll wait for them to let us know what their opinion is on that. And then, let me see, I had one additional thing. Foothill Road improvements. Oh, the trail open to the public, right? So I think I've read it correctly, I want to just verify. The Maryland-Murphy Trail that we're having, the gate to get to that trail is not for the public. The public will be, it's a design question, they'll be able to free-range north-south, but members of the community who want to access, they would have to traverse a gate, is that correct?
That's correct, though I believe there's actually multiple entry and exit points along the project perimeter there, that it's a secure gate access.
Designed for the residents, but the public, let's call it general member of the public, will be able to free, I'll call it free, I like free range, will be able to free-range north-south.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I saw how it jogged at the northern side to kind of connect into the street. Okay, I think that was it for clarifying questions. Oh, apologize, trees, trees was my last. So I noticed that the staff report clearly identifies a number of trees being removed. Could you just clarify where we're at with replacement of trees, or the landscape plan staff is very comfortable that we think we'll be able to make up for the number removed with the ultimate landscape?
Yes, and a big chunk of those trees that are coming out are actually former orchard remnants and things like that, and so a lot of those trees are already dead or not in great shape, but the replacement, so as stated in the report, we have preliminary landscape plans, final numbers on replacement, and will that be a two-to-one, a three-to-one, one-to-one type replacement? That's usually kind of fettered out during the construction-level documents, and our landscape architect team looks at that in depth, so we don't have an exact number on those yet, but preliminarily, the landscape team has looked at it, and they're fairly comfortable at this point. And then, you know, again, as construction drawings develop, things shift a little bit, things like that, there may be opportunities to add trees, move trees around, and that sort of thing, the replacement.
Clarifying question to that, and you hit on something that I didn't anticipate, which is, does it ever drop below a one-to-one? You know, if it's two-to-one in replacement with the ultimate landscape plan, does it ever drop below one-to-one? Is there a minimum that the city has as a standard? I'm not asking you to define it project-specific, but do we have one?
Yeah, there's no formal policy that I'm aware of, but typically, we shoot for a minimum of one-to-one in the projects that I've worked on over the last 10-plus years here, so.
Okay, and given the development agreement and PUD, we anticipate we will be able to achieve at least that, correct, staff?
Yes, there's enough open area on this property that I think we'll have no problem accommodating a much higher ratio than the one-to-one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, just a few questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. This parcel, this project is part of our housing element, and as such, qualifies for the RENA allocation and satisfaction of that allocation, does it not?
So, this is one of our housing element sites, and so we do count, I think, 92 units in our housing element inventory. There is a process that we have to go through with the county as part of the annexation proceedings to negotiate how the RENA might be adjusted between the city and county, you know, in an appropriate manner. So, as described in the memo that was distributed, there is very little development potential of this site unless it's annexed to the city, so we have a very strong case to advocate for the vast majority, if not all, of that housing to be counted against the city's RENA. The county does not include it in their current housing element or their draft, and they haven't over the past few cycles, so all of that points to the city being able to really claim and take advantage of that additional RENA in our housing element, but we will have to go through a process with the county to, you know, to come to agreement on that number.
Okay.
Councilmember Nybert, would you mind if I injected some information on that?
No, please go ahead.
Thank you. I did ask about that, I was concerned that in our staff report, it actually said that we would have to negotiate how many units, if any, that Pleasanton would get, so that concerned me greatly, and Jim Summers offered to reach out to Dave Halbert at the county, and I had a very interesting conversation with him, and I have in writing that he said that he will support in full the full number of units being credited to Pleasanton's RENA, and that he has every reason to believe that the county will support that. So that was the best we could do, since my first thing was, we shouldn't approve until we've negotiated, but it was made clear that we're not able to negotiate until we've approved, so. Anyway, I got it in writing, yay!
Okay, excellent. Yeah, it's good that we are making progress toward our RENA goals, of course, it's a fairly small number in this case for the affordable portion of that, but every little bit helps. So with the CEQA review for the housing element, there are a number of mitigation measures that are identified, I guess not an overwhelming number, but there were some mitigation measures on impacts that were identified. Have all of those been addressed in the conditions of approval?
They said that there are any mitigation measures that are not already covered through project design, those are specified as conditions of approval, I think 41 is the one that covers any kind of remaining sort of construction-timing-related mitigations.
Okay, I did notice the paleontological one.
Right, yeah, there's some things that you don't know until you're actually digging up dirt and discovering remains or fossils or whatnot that you might need to mitigate.
Okay, I believe I heard that the onsite affordable units would be offered for sale, and so in order for them to remain affordable, will they be deed-restricted, because usually they, my understanding is they aren't usually offered for sale?
Correct, those will be permanently deed-restricted, the city will monitor the initial sale and any subsequent sale of those BMR units to make sure that they're able to be purchased by qualified buyers.
Okay, great, and then one particular concern, because of the, and it's been addressed, I believe, but could you just touch on the potential for flooding, since this is right next to Purry Court, where we had the significant winter storm damage a year and a half ago?
I have one of our in-house experts hiding back there, Michael Stella, member of our land development team, who'd be happy to address that question.
You knew you stayed up till 10:30 for a good reason.
Absolutely. Good evening, members of the council. I think Vice Mayor Testa also asked this question about flooding, so thank you for your question, Councilmember Nybert. So, I'll answer it in a couple ways. First, when we talk about flooding, we consider what we call FEMA flood zones. We do have some FEMA flood zones within Pleasanton. A small corner of the property at the southwest end is within a designated FEMA flood zone. The applicant has agreed to elevate that area of the site to remove that portion of the site from the flood zone, and they will be required by the conditions of approval to file lateral map provision with FEMA to formally remove that area from the flood zone. Now, with respect to the flooding that the city unfortunately experienced two years ago on Purry Court, the city experienced an unprecedented or historic storm event that winter season. Many areas of the community flooded, quite honestly. Purry Court was especially hard-hit. Much of the water that flowed off of the open spa, or the undeveloped hillside that's in unincorporated Alameda County flowed through old county culverts underneath Foothill Road and through a pipe network in Purry Court. The culverts are quite antiquated, they will be replaced with the project, together with the road widening that the applicant has proposed. When the water reaches Purry Court, I did a hydraulic analysis, and it identified the need to upsize the pipes within Purry Court. They were not originally designed to accommodate the typical storm events. So city engineer Adam Nelke has initiated a design to upgrade those pipes as part of our capital improvement program. And that program, that project should be implemented next summer. When the water leaves Purry Court, after the capital improvement program project is implemented, the water will enter the Merritt property, and the Merritt design includes an oversized storm drain pipe that's dedicated just for that stormwater to travel through the property down to a large covert that extends underneath Interstate 680 into Royo de la Laguna. So we don't expect flooding will occur both after the CIP project is implemented by the city and the development is implemented by the applicant.
Okay, very good, thank you so much for that response.
You're welcome.
And then one last thing, the West Side has experienced a number of PG&E outages, I think three over the last month or so. Will this development exacerbate that? What kind of, are there any special provisions regarding PG&E?
So, typically, the applicant is required to negotiate privately with PG&E for service for electricity and such. The city does have some measures in place through the building code and such for solar and things of that nature, and I'm actually going to let the applicant team speak to that in more detail about what they're providing as part of this project to help maybe offset some of that impact, but, yeah, and some of the utilities will be undergrounded as part of this project, which hopefully will help mitigate some of those power outages for lines that are overhead currently in the area. But beyond that, again, they're going to have to negotiate with PG&E to make sure that the number of units that are providing can be accommodated currently. I see Jerry jump in.
Yeah, I'm going to add just a little bit, we've been in constant contact with PG&E, particularly, it's been years for that area of our community. We are hit more often with outages in that part of our community, and so the way that I've characterized this for folks who've raised this issue with me is, this is a PG&E infrastructure issue, not a capacity issue. There's something that is faulting in that system that PG&E has to address, and so we do have a meeting with them, I believe it's the last week of July or the first week of August, where we've asked them to come to us, not with sort of a more government affairs-oriented answer, but with specific issues that they've identified with the system and the timeframe under which they're going to get them resolved. So we're trying to keep these two issues separate. If it was a supply issue, an overall capacity issue in the area, I think that would be a very different conversation for us with this development application, but we know that there is something more fundamental and systemic with the system around faults and some, there's a lot of underground infrastructure in other neighborhoods that seems to be nearing the end of its useful life. So we need PG&E to fix that and try to keep, I think we should try to keep that separate from the conversation about this development application.
I would agree, yes, so I'm glad to hear that that conversation is going to occur, and may I suggest that you also include the Donlin area in that discussion as well.
Okay.
We're not alone, Danville has issues, so this is not just a Pleasanton-specific situation with PG&E. In fact, for Danville, it actually affects their downtown, so we're trying to partner with them to see if we can get some attention for our area from PG&E for some of their capital investments.
Okay, Councilmember Arkay.
Thank you, and, yeah, a lot of my, I had a lot of my questions already answered, so I only have a few quick things. I just, if I could ask, Ms. Clark, you mentioned with the regional housing allocation numbers, you mentioned 92 we would get, why would we not get the 111?
I'm sorry, so what I said was, there's 92 units that we counted in our housing element, that's part of our inventory, so we would get credit for all of the units.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I didn't hear something.
Yeah, I think we have clarification correctly.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. One other question, any possibility of using recycled water for the yards, the park, any of the green spaces in this development?
Michael's still in the room, but I don't think that that infrastructure currently exists in that area of the city, I don't think, I actually don't think we cross 680 at all, do it right, so I think the answer would be no to that question.
I'm asking, the members of the public have asked that, and have wondered why we're not doing that, so I wanted that answered. Thank you. Last question, and maybe the developers can talk to it. Mentioned in the staff report that it's going to be a LEED-certified project, which I believe, I, okay, maybe, was I incorrect on that?
No, I did review the cap checklist earlier this evening, and I don't believe it quite, I don't believe that they're proposing LEED-certified for this project.
Okay, I could have sworn it says that in the, I'll have to look, okay, I will look, and I thought I saw that, I was just inquiring about that. Okay, that's in terms of questions, yeah, I have comments, but no more questions right now, thank you.
Right, okay, thanks. Yeah, all my questions are answered, but one, I'm struggling with this pathway that some people have access to and some people don't, because the goal was Maryland-Cane Trail for kids to ride their bikes to school and then get exercise and get some vehicle traffic, sorry, some bicycle traffic off Foothill over to a safer route for slower cyclists. So can you go through that process one more time? I see in the photo, people standing outside a gate, looking frustrated in the photo. And I saw somebody that looked like Sharon riding a bicycle earlier there, wearing a bit of a yellow jacket, so.
As I knew you were going to ask that question, Mayor Brown, I provided this backup slide, and can you guys see that there on your monitors?
Yes.
Okay, so if you can see my cursor, no, I don't know, okay, so I'm just going to, I'm going to try to verbally walk you through this. So if you start in the bottom right-hand corner of this shot, that is where the current northern end of the Maryland-Murphy-Cane Trail ends in the Foothill-Noll's neighborhood. So the project would pick up where the gray color starts to show up. From that entire gray area run that kind of meanders north as you get up towards Mirwood, and then it dogs legs to the left, and then ultimately, it punches out on Fernwood Way, that is all intended for public circulation. To the right of, excuse me, to the left of that pathway, and then on the top part of the picture, what would be below that pathway is the project fence line, and that would have the secure gates access in and out. But everything, I'm going to call it to the, if you can, if you're, I don't really have a good way to point, we don't have pointers in here anymore, but, oh, look at that, let's see, let's see, can I use that? Okay, laser pointer, look at that, okay, we're on it, okay, here we go, sorry. So, one more time, yeah, one more time. So this is the current area where the trail ends, so everything here along this pathway is public, available to the public, or accessible to the public, and then it punches out on Fernwood up here to the north. So this entire area, all public. The project's fence line is approximately somewhere here to the left, and then somewhere just kind of to the south of the pathway. That would be controlled gated access points for the residents of the project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, so this photo that you've got, neighborhood context?
Yeah.
Is that an EVA, then?
That is partially an EVA, and that actually is, right here where my laser pointer is, that's that intersection point right now where Fernwood Way currently dead ends at the northern end of the project here, and so this pathway where you see And so this pathway where you see those people that are disgruntled in their faces is right here at this sidewalk. I don't know why they're disgruntled, but this is.
Because it's 110 and they want to.
That could be it. So, so that, that trail terminus punches out right here on Fernwood, but the fence line for EVA is approximately in this area right here.
Okay, great. And we just have two EVAs in this project.
Yep, one, there's three, yes. Two, two at the northern end and one at the southern side.
Okay, thank you. I'll go back to my map and, okay. All right, because one of the neighbors said they want to have a, okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. What if they need to have the EVA? So it could work both ways, right? If Mirrorwood is blocked, then that EVA could be open so that people can get safely through this community to gain access to Foothill. It works both ways.
And Mayor Brown, just so you can identify, so one EVA here at Fernwood. This one is Eastwood, I think. And then down here on the south end, right here.
Okay, great.
Before you go, can I ask?
That's my last question, sure.
Do I, did I understand correctly that every unit has solar?
So I believe solar ready, correct? Or you guys are solar, okay, thank you.
Full solar in place. Great.
Embedded or something.
Oh, just solar ready.
There will be solar panels.
There you go.
Okay, we'll just wait till they come up so they can be on the record.
Okay. Well, and I had one other, on the tree thing, I have, I had asked the applicant about the replanting of trees because it did say 600 or 300 trees would be removed. And I have a response from the applicant saying that, from the architect, landscape architect, saying that 606 trees are on the plan for replacement, so.
Okay, two to one, sounds great. Okay, I'm going to open.
I did find the area. Can I just?
Sure.
Okay, I did find it on page 28 of 35 of the staff report. So all it says is, as required by the city's green building ordinance, the proposed project is required to meet at least a green home or a LEED certified. So it's going to be a green home. Okay, what, what is the difference? I mean, in 20 words or less.
I mean, it's, it's standards that was developed really to try and create a fairly high level of, of energy efficiency in those homes. So LEED is a sort of branded designation that requires inspection certification by a LEED qualified inspector. And so the green, the green building is just a little bit of a less proprietary, but similar measures, is my understanding.
All right, okay. Okay, I know it's getting late here, so we're going to try to be as efficient as we can. Mr. Patrick Costanzo, you're part of the, representing the applicant, which normally has 10 minutes, so if you do not take all the 10 minutes, that's okay too. But if you need it, it's there. So if the clerk could set it for 10 minutes, thank you. And it looks like we might have more than one speaker. Welcome, Jim. Jim and Patrick's show, right?
Jim and Patrick's show, yes, thank you very much. Mayor Brown, Mayor Brown, members of the council, staff, good evening. My name is Jim Summers. I'm the president of the Silla Group and a managing member of the Foothill Boulevard Holding Company. I'm so glad to be here this evening. I have been personally involved in the detailed planning of this project since the late 1990s. The Foothill Boulevard Holding Company has owned 30 of this project's 46 acres since about 1999. The remaining acres are owned in part by the Merit Family Trust and Merit Farms, and I am here this evening representing those interests by contract as well. We have been very patient in waiting for the right opportunity to bring a well-thought-out and well-planned project to the city of Pleasanton. We have planned this project to be sensitive to the adjoining neighborhoods. This project brings many public benefits to the Pleasanton community in the form of major safety improvements to Foothill Road, including bike lanes and walkways, much-needed regional trail connections, and much-needed inclusionary, affordable, for-sale senior housing. I would like to thank the city staff for literally their countless hours and thoughtful review of this proposal. Thank you, guys, really. It's been a pleasure working with you. Their input has added valuable insights to make this great project for the Pleasanton community. With our team this evening, Pakistanzo, who will make a brief presentation, who has extensive planning and building experience in Pleasanton, Matt Gray, who is our legal counsel, and Frank Burlager, who is our project geotechnical engineer. He's been on this project since the mid 90s as well. Our team will be available to answer any questions you might have during the public hearing. I would like to answer a couple of questions that came up during your questions and answer. The public trail is open to all and Pat and I will be talking to our graphics simulator to make sure that he takes the frowns off of people's faces so they are no longer looking disgruntled in these photo simulations. As far as the traffic condition, yes, we understand the traffic condition. We have agreed that we will be installing those traffic radar signs as recommended by Mike DiSano and that the traffic signal in the future would be a part of the traffic impact fees that we are paying to the city of Pleasanton. I was going to answer the question, but Julie did it already. The actual number was 601 trees, but believe me, on this site, if we need 606, we can fit them somewhere. The flood zone, I just want to let people know that there was a cutoff date that we had to apply to start the process to move this project out of the flood zone. That was last year. We worked with Mike Stella and we worked with Alameda County staff, because it's in the county right now, to get what we call a preliminary letter of map revision through FEMA. And that's already been approved so that all we have to do once we annex is just go through the process. One step's already done on that. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Pat. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, I'm Mayor Mayor Brown and council members, Patrick Costanzo Jr., and I'm with PCJ Real Estate Advisors. As you know, I've been bringing communities to Pleasanton for the last 30 years and I'm very excited about this one that's before you tonight. I believe it'll be a wonderful addition to the, to the community. I would also like to thank staff from, from Jerry, Ellen, Eric, Melinda, everyone. Mike DiSano's been working with us on Foothill for four years to get that design right. And everyone's been wonderful, the legal team working after hours to get stuff done. And so everyone, this was a very collaborative effort. And if we can bring up my slides, I'll, I'll, I'll try to go through quickly. Jim took more time than he was supposed to, but maybe Mayor Brown will give me a few extra minutes.
We see. They can see the right here.
Oh, okay, great. I, I need to read it. Go ahead. So tonight, I'm just going quickly, our development team discussed who we are, a proposed project, talk a little about the background, the community benefits, the proposed community, and then have some questions and answers. So as Jim said, he already identified the owners. I will go back through that and, and myself, our architects, we have two architects, Dolan and KTGY. KTGY did the rec center. Dolan did all the, the homes, both very familiar with Pleasanton and have done work on many of our projects in the past. Civil engineer, RJA, and our landscape architect, Stover and Associates, all quality firms that are ensuring that we have a quality development. Site boundary, you know where it is, we can go through that. And Eric did such a great presentation, I'm going to fly through a lot of these slides because you don't need to hear the same thing again, so we can skip this one. So what is the project? 92 market rate homes, 18 senior affordable for sale, and I will emphasize for sale, that's a big deal. It's not available anywhere in the state new and we can only find one project when we're trying to get some background through all of, all of Northern California. Not yet. Eric told you, we have, we have many elevations to create an eclectic street scene, homes 2300 to 4900. 4900 is the largest house, but with a J, an ADU built in, which I'll discuss a little more. The lot sizes on the courtyards are smaller, of course, and, and the outside market rate ones go from 8,000 all the way up to 26,000. Our rec center is pretty spectacular. It's 1.16 acres, main clubhouse, wellness building, pool, spa, barbecue, trellis structures. It's, it's, it's top of the notch for this kind of community. And Jim and I went and studied 20 different communities and made sure we understand the best practices and implemented them in this project. And I think you'll see that as we move forward. So this is the community plan. Couple of things to point out, again, it's been talked about, but there are several commitments that were made by Jim 20 years ago and we were sure to keep those. And if my pointer would work on the screen, I'd be very happy. It disappears on the screen.
There it is.
Yeah, there you go. It's very hard to see. So north and south, we've got the 50-foot borders, minimum 50-foot setback. That is unheard of in today's development cycle, but we've held it and that's great. The no vehicular access to the adjoining neighborhoods, using the three EVAs, another big commitment that was withheld, project designed around that. You can see a couple of the big oak trees in the, in the center of the site there and up on top. We designed the whole site around that. Go to the next. Go to the next. So being a county project that's going to be annexed as well as a PUD and getting a DA, you know, we asked for community benefits. And that's always been the discussion from five years ago when we started and got on the priority list for the, for the council. We've gone through two of those cycles. We have a lot of community benefits we're happy to share with you. 18 for-sale affordable senior homes. That is a cost of over $13.9 million above the in-lu fees of 5.5 million that we would normally pay. You don't see these projects because they're not, they're not easy to provide, very expensive. Some will be able to buy a house at, at the, at the moderate level and 18 of those, it's very exciting. Maryland Murphy Kane Trail, that is in your trail plan, your master trail plan. It was one of the highest priorities. When I go through this, you'll see what benefits it's going to add. It connects the five acre Metalark Park in Laguna Oaks to this community. That park was built for the whole region, so that is great. We, we are paying for that without getting any park credits, which again, it's a public benefit, public trail, but we're not getting the, the credit. We will be paying in, in addition, $2.3 million of facility fees. So, so you're getting those too. We've, we've taken on the trail maintenance and replacement. That's 40,000 a year in perpetuity, plus the replacement. That's just to maintain it. The widening and safety improvements to Foothill Road, as was explained, normally you're required to do what's in your frontage. Our frontage is about 800 feet. North of us is an extra 250 feet we're doing and south is another 800 feet that we are improving and again, not getting any traffic fee and credits. That's a $4 million cost for all those improvements. No school impacts, I can't overemphasize that. Obviously, this town has always had a consideration of overcrowded schools and all development was an issue, which is a reason why we're doing this project age qualified, quite frankly. When we decided what kind of project to bring to you, it was no, no, no impact to school and how can we reduce traffic? Age qualified. That's a risk for us because that cuts out about 60% of the buying public of, of homes because you have to be 55 and over. So that, that commitment was made and, and it's, it's a, it's a big risk in a, in a way. The significantly reduced traffic is, is really serious. We measured it, it matches Ironwoods. It's 49% less than if it was a market rate project. And more importantly, as you know, level of service and, and impacts are measured at peak hours. Our peak hour trips are 25 to 30. And if you take that in four different directions, you got seven and a half to 15 trips going every hour. Not a lot.
Mr. Costanzo, I know we wanted to give you a few more minutes, but I just want to make sure that you were into just a few more minutes.
Okay, I got to get back into the benefits.
You're right, Eric did a great presentation.
Okay, we'll go through the 50-foot setback, already resolved the flooding issue, I want to talk about that in a second. We're also paying another amount of city fees, about seven and a half million, and a public safety contribution, as Eric mentioned, of a million dollars. The Maryland Murphy Kane Trail extension, you've seen this slide already, I'm not going to waste any more time, but I do want to point out this, oh, go back. That slide, oh, my pointer's working. You can see that this is the current trail, it stops there. With our connection, then it opens the safe path of travel for children to ride to the back of Foothill, never even having to go to Foothill Road to get to the high school. So it's a very key improvement for, for safety. The traffic generation, this is the, the table reflecting the 440 and 860 trips that was mentioned by Eric. This is the Foothill improvements. Everything yellow is what is beyond our site and then the non-yellow is in front of our site. So again, you can see significant portion not on our site. This, I want to take a couple of minutes on, this is the flooding issue, so don't count these against my minutes. As, as explained, the city, the green line on the left is where the city is upsizing the pipes. That was explained by Mr. Stella. And I don't know why that's not working, I'm not going to try anymore. Those green lines are at 24-inch pipes now, they're going to 48-inch. So that's going to take a lot more water. What that does, though, it does increase the rate of flow onto our site. So as he explained, the blue pipe, that pipe is collecting all the water coming from Purry, putting it underground, taking it all the way to the freeway and then putting it under the freeway. So we have to upsize those pipes to take the increased flow and, and so we are, and that whole pipe is, is simply to capture that water. And having said that, to the south borderline where you see the kind of blue cloud there, those neighbors are affected by the channel that's in place when it, when, when the rain comes, comes and it's, it's overflow, it flows into their backyards. For years, Jim's had to put sandbags out there to protect them, et cetera. All that will go away. So all the flooding in the rear yard of anyone up there will be solved. Next slide. Affordable homes, one of the big things is in the IZO, you have to distribute them throughout the project. So we did that in, in three different clusters throughout the site and you can see where all the yellow boxes are. Those are going to be the affordable units. You can see within those clusters are market rate units also. So we've really distributed it where you have a market rate unit next to an affordable and so we feel very good about how we integrated it and that it meets the intention of the IZO. Elevations, I won't go into it. Eric did that well. I do just want to point out right there, the BMRs are, are well-designed to fit right into the community, same materials and they, they, they look great. I think you're going to drive by, you won't know it's one of the BMRs. Didn't want to touch quickly on the ADUs because that did come up on a couple of questions. As Eric said, we have four plans that have ADUs in, that can be inside the project. They're not just JDUs because JDUs, you don't need to have a kitchen and you can use a shared bath. These are ADUs where they have a kitchenette and they also have a bath, so perfect for the caregivers, that, that was discussed. And then we have the detached ADU as well that we'll be offering to, to home buyers to buy. So we've committed to put two inside and two, and two exterior. We don't want to commit to more, especially exterior, because if they're not needed, we don't want to have them just sitting out there. And we got to see what the demand is since it's a little different being senior. Next slide. That's the community plan again. Recreation Center, I'll blow through it quickly. It's located in the center of the site, which is very good because they're all, all residents will be able to get to it. When you come straight down the main aisle, you drive into the building. This, the site is laid out, as, as you know, there's topography going from Foothill all the way down to the freeway. So the site itself for the rec center is in four stepped pads. So the first one up front to the left there is the rec, the main building, the rec building, and that has the main lounge room, has, has a community room where you can do activities, et cetera. Then down one level is the pool, spa, and your, and your basically gym. One more level down, you go and you see the gazebos, the fire pits. Next level's grass, hangout area, play with your grandkids, play bocce, and then the all needed pickleball courts. That was the most important thing. Everyone told us, you need to have pickleball courts. Probably need more, but we, we didn't have the space for it. We are protecting, the one negative about pickleball courts are they loud? And so that's surrounded by a sound wall. That's the main front building at a perspective view. You can see it incorporates really Sonoma Napa style materials, bat and board siding, nice ledge stone. The upstairs on this second floor is kind of exciting for me. Basically, we put that up there specifically to capture and provide views of the ridge. And you'll, where it's located, the front deck will, you'll get. And you'll see, where it's located, the front deck, well, you'll get sit out of the deck and look at the ridge. Actually, there's a back deck to this and it actually sees Mount Diablo. And that, that second level is of course, having an elevator to it as well as stairs. That's the layout of the main building, we can go past that. That's the back of the main building. So as I said, there's a back deck and that's right, raising right above the second level where the pool is there. Next slide, there you go. You can see the pool, the spa, the gym, all on the second level. And then to the third level down the left corner is the gazebo and fire pit area. That's the, the main gym building. That's the gym layout. That's the layout again. These are more elevations, keep going, go through, these are all, I just want to back up one. I did want to point out, we have these backup to the floor plan that we just saw. So again, we have second floor pop-ups and those are all designed to be the front of the house and no windows to the back. So it, it really protects the, the, the privacy of adjoining neighbors.
Okay.
You can blow through these, Eric.
All right. Looks good.
And Mayor Brown, I'm done. Any questions?
Okay. You know, we think we've all heard that, actually 101 as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Costanzo. You'll have a chance for closing if there's anything that comes up that needs your response. First speaker is Sharon Pikarski, followed by James Sadler. Sadler? Welcome. I did see a picture of a person in a bicycle, looked a lot like you.
Yes, you did.
She was happy. She was happy.
I expressed my concerns about this project at the planning commission meeting. While there was much discussion about the safety of drivers entering and exiting the development, the commissioners seemed uninterested in bicycle safety. My concerns were also not mentioned in your staff report, so here I am. Quoting staff report, "The project proposes to add bicycle lanes along the property frontage of Foothill Road consistent with the city's bicycle master plan and additional improvements that include widening Foothill Road to provide continuous bike lanes, including installing six-foot bike lanes with two-foot striped buffer lanes where feasible." "Foothill Road is a high-speed corridor which is frequently used by bicyclists, and this particular section is near Foothill High School, which makes it particularly important that an all-ages and abilities facility be built. You may remember a few years ago when television crews were filming parents and students demonstrating for greater safety at this very location. Some will say that bicyclists can just ride the sidewalk. Sidewalks may feel safer to ride, but they are not. Sidewalks were designed for slow-moving pedestrians. When a driver is pulling onto a roadway, they are looking in that roadway for oncoming vehicles, not down the sidewalk for a fast-moving bicycle. The cyclist is also closer to the front of the vehicle, providing less space and time to avoid a potential collision. Sidewalk riding also encourages casual inexperienced bicyclists and kids to ride the opposite direction of traffic. Think about it. Drivers are looking left toward oncoming vehicles, not right toward that bicyclist. Bicycles riding on sidewalks also endanger pedestrians. Unlike wide trails, it is much more difficult for a bicyclist to maneuver around pedestrians on a narrower sidewalk, causing a higher chance of collisions, which could cause serious injury. It's not just cyclists, but also unpredictable pedestrians that are at issue. The bike pit master plan requires a minimum of buffered bike lanes on streets with speeds higher than 30 miles per hour. In addition, on page 92 of the master plan, there is discussion specific to Foothill Road, which reads, 'High speeds require separated bikeways or paths to be considered in all-ages and abilities network. It is simple to convert a buffered bike lane to a separated bikeway. It only requires adding relatively inexpensive bollards in the buffer. I'm concerned that saying buffered bike lanes will be installed where feasible gives the developer permission to put in a portion of the bike lane that does not meet the requirements of the bike pit master plan. Please require a separated bikeway along the entire frontage of this project. Developers can be quite creative in meeting requirements if pressed to do so.'" And I would love to see the developers design of the trail because the, the stuff in the staff report showed the trail stopping at Mirrorwood, which would drop kids going to school on Mirrorwood and have to travel to Foothill to get to school. So I don't know what that was behind Foothill.
Okay. All right. Thank you. James Sadler, and you're followed by John Hall.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Supervisors, staff, everybody. I was at the planning commission meeting, Eric, hi. And we went over a number of different things. My primary concern, as is others, is Foothill Road and the safety. This project is the last project that has an opportunity to fix Foothill Road from Laguna Oaks to the high school and then onward. If this is not done, this, currently the project calls for realignment from north of Prairie Court going north. That leaves approximately 600 feet between Foothill Knolls and Prairie Court. That will have no bicycle paths, no sidewalks, just what's there right now. I have some pictures that shows, in the capacity's up to the front if you would, that shows the blind spots coming out of Foothill Knolls. Foothill Knolls, as this project will have, comes up from a lower elevation to the road. If you look to the right, there is no acceleration lane and there's about 400 feet of visibility as Foothill curves around. If you look to the south towards Laguna Oaks, you see nothing for 500 feet because the elevation of the road is so low. So right now, you have a situation coming out of Foothill Knolls, I've lived there for 39 years by the way, of blind spots. If you drive southward on Foothill Road, you have the same illusions coming up from lower elevation by the high school, past Mirrorwood, and coming up around the bends. You don't see oncoming traffic. I think that it's mandatory, and in previous plans it has been, that Foothill Road be completed. If, if this is not done now, there are no other projects that you can assess the cost to, to do the other 500 or 600 feet of alignment of Foothill Road. And we're going to be stuck with it, what we've been stuck with 39 years that I've lived there. The other single issue I have, Foothill Knolls on the north side, Foothill Knolls when it was built, was determined to be in a flood plain and the property was filled between six and eight feet pre-construction. Currently, my backyard sits six feet above the grade of the Merak property. They're planning to remove 12,000 cubic yards of material. And even though they will put some things underground, that water is still going to erode, come back towards our property on the north side of Foothill and cause additional erosion. I've lost six feet of my backyard and three fences since we moved in. So my yard keeps moving in and in and in. I want to know, in previous plan called for regrading the property to constant elevation, if there's a six-foot fence, it's going to only come up two feet into my, to my backyard and the height, I'm going to look right over into their yards.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can keep the pictures.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you for taking those, it, it does help envision it. John Hall, followed by TJ McGrath.
I'm John Hall, I've lived in Pleasanton for 20 some odd years. I, I live in Foothill Knolls now. I was in, I was at the planning commission meeting and I was also at the meeting that the city council did when we did the mall planning for all the housing and all that stuff. The reason I bring that up is because I had the same question I had then, and that is water, not excessive water coming down, but water to support, you know, bathing, eating, drinking, that kind of thing. When I asked the question about the, during, during the mall project, about how we're going to get water, since we've already been rationed water since I've been here many times, the answer I got was, well, it's a state mandated thing, so we really can't do much about it. So when I went to the planning commission meeting about this, when I asked what the solution was for water, since we're going to have none of those hundreds of houses there, but these new houses, the answer I got was, well, we're going to be able to solve that problem because we're going to be able to buy a bunch more water. And then in lieu, in view of the state's recent restriction on the selling of water, how much water can actually be sold to communities, I'm concerned that maybe we don't have the ability to just go buy a bunch of water. And so I'd just like to know what we're doing to make sure that we have enough water to support all the housing and everything we're building, but we don't seem to have enough now. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm going to have staff answer all these questions towards the end after we hear from everybody. TJ McGrath, and you're followed by Holly.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Staff. My name is TJ McGrath, I'm here with my wife Sheila. We're a 35-year residents of Pleasanton. We raised our family here. And about five years ago, I think it was February 27th, 2019, we attended the first meeting on this discussion around the same time I retired and the kids were gone. So I said to my wife, it's time to downsize and move. I checked five different areas that have, were of interest to me in Northern California, and it was humbling. It doesn't get any better than Pleasanton. So we, yeah, we didn't put up the sign, we didn't move. If anything, we, we, we threw out the anchor and we're here to stay. So I was involved in this project from the beginning. To me, it's the best use of the land, but there are some details to work out. I'd like to see this project move forward. I think it's a real plus to the city. I think the Foothill thing can be worked out. To me, it means pulling back on some of the property inland there. And I'd like to thank all of you for keeping this project alive and bringing it to this point that these little details can be worked out. So last week, I was taking some photos of some negative things that I wanted to address. The drainage across the street, the creeks, the power lines, and Julie caught me taking the photos. So when I sent her a note last Friday night saying, here's what I'm going to discuss next week, she puts me in touch with the developers, and this can only happen in Pleasanton. The developers call us today, my wife and I were on a Zoom with them for over an hour. So I do believe that that's the best group to work with, and I think you're the best group to move this thing forward. Once again, it's the most productive use of the land, and I think these details can be worked out. So thank you very much, appreciate your last comment.
Well, you can just come speak anytime. I mean, we like. Come speak anytime, you're always welcome. All right. Our last speaker is Holly before the applicant's invited to come back.
Good evening, everyone. So I keep a quick, I want to bring on two things. First, you know, for the traffic, so even in the weekend, so like when 680 has traffic, right?
You just stand right by that microphone for us, thank you.
When 680 has traffic, a lot of cars will go into Foothill. So I think I, I, I suggest that people will check this and, you know, to find something to, I mean, for the traffic, they maybe only check at the normal time, they didn't check like when the 680 has traffic. So there are a lot of cars will pile up along the Foothill. Yeah. The first thing. The second thing is, you know, close to this project, there are few community, very close to the project, they only have a Foothill as exit. They, they, I mean, they don't have any other way to go out. So I'm thinking it's like, I'm worried like in case of a emergency or Foothill was blocked, how these people can get out? Like, I think like Nob Hill, Nob's, Prairie Court, and Laguna, maybe. Like all the exit is from a Foothill, you know? So in case Foothill was blocked, how they evacuate? I mean, this is my concern just bring out. Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. All right. So I've been taking notes and I bet everyone else has too. Would you like the applicant to address some of these issues or, Mr. Lucini, would you like to?
Yes, I think perhaps Mike DeSaro can speak to the bike lane design issue.
Bike lane design and traffic backup for emergencies. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Nice to see you guys again. I thought maybe I was going to get out of speaking tonight, but thanks, Helen. All right.
You don't remember coming through the door and being in the row?
No, I know, I thought that was it. I was like, yeah, I was here for an extra one, so. So the bike lanes, the, the buffered bike lanes, we, we do like to have protected bike lanes on our arterial roadways. As you guys know, the, the, the community that rides most frequently on Foothill is really our avid cyclists. And they're, they have some mixed reviews on, on the bollards. So we do have some bollards that are on a couple of different sections of Foothill Road. Just north of the high school, we have some, some bollards that are there, and then even a little bit further up near Highland Oaks. And so those two locations are kind of like, we've had some mixed reviews about those. Instead of conditioning the developer to put in the protected bike lanes, which would be the bollards, we are in the process of updating our pedestrian bicycle master plan, supposed to be done every five years. It was adopted in 2018, so we're right on course, or pretty close. So I think what, what I would like to do is have a public process that actually identifies Foothill Road, maybe independent, and, and have a design that, that we get input from the public before we require the developer to put something in, then maybe we take it back out. As Sharon had mentioned, they are relatively easy to put in, the, the most important thing is to have the space, right? To have the two-foot space that we could put a bollard in there if we need to. And I think that's what this development's providing and one of the things that we worked really hard to make sure that we had. I think that, that's it for the protected versus buffered bike lane.
Okay. All right. Ability to view Foothill at Foothill Knolls from a traffic standpoint?
Yeah, I, I think normally, as Pat mentioned, normally we require the developer to improve their project frontage, right? So we go project frontage by project frontage in kind of a piece by piece. When we were working with the developer, there's no other pieces much to the, to the last speaker's point, like there's, there's not a lot of other choices that we have. So we ask them to extend beyond their boundaries essentially, the thousand feet, so he said 200 feet to the north, 800 to the south. So we are tying in full bike lanes through there, but to do more would be a city project, right? That would be a city improvement. We can't really, it, it's not easy to tie a developer to a project that's further away. That's what we have development impact fees for, and that's what they pay their fees is to make those improvements.
Okay. All right. And I don't know why Foothill Knolls didn't do that.
Neither.
Okay.
So, so can I ask on that, how, I mean, is, what is the likelihood of that actually getting done and connected? When, when might there be funding and when it?
Well, it's, so it's, so we don't have a project in place to make modifications to any section of Foothill with the exception of the S curve, right? So we do have a vision of, of widening through the S curve, which is further to the north. But through this section, I haven't looked at the site distance, it is limited throughout there. One of the things that we run into from a, from a development perspective is a lot of the residents there like the fact that there's no sidewalks, that there's not as many streetlights. It, it's kind of that rural feel. It's the same thing that we had when we were doing Ruby Hill and that, that section when we rebuilt Vineyard Avenue. There was, there's like a desire to have a different feel. And so I think that's one of the challenges that we have. This road was designed, you know, in the 50s and 60s, and it's been the same way. We get that argument a lot. As I, as I put in the supplemental, most of the crashes that we have aren't the making a left turn out. We don't have any crashes that have the left turn out. What we do have are people driving off the road, right? They hit, they hit fixed object, that just means you ran into the hillside or into a tree or something else. And so what we've asked the developer to do is widen the road so that way you have a better ability to correct as you're driving through the windy sections.
Okay. And I noticed there's a center lane, a turn lane on quite a bit of Foothill, but Ms. Holly asked, if traffic is all backed up and there's an emergency, how do you get out?
Yeah, I think that's something that is a, a condition that occurs all along Foothill and a lot of different two-lane roadways that we have. It, I mean, it's, I'm not the fire department or the police department, so how they get up to Foothill, you know, it's one of the things that we try to work on. One of our biggest issues is, you know, everyone driving their kids to school and then, and then picking them up from school, right? That's our, on Foothill, with the exception of the recent congestion we've had from the construction on 680, our reoccurring congestion are, are residents that have to drive their kids to school. So these improvements will help alleviate that. But it, it is a condition where, you know, 20 years ago, we didn't have the same congestion because more kids walked to school. So I think it's one of those things that's just difficult to, to address. So I think it's one of those things that's just difficult to address.
Take the bus.
We had buses twenty years ago.
Well, we didn't have buses twenty years ago, because I was here twenty years ago. We definitely did not have them.
You're right. It was closer to thirty. My kids rode the buses, yeah.
We did work on a bus system.
School buses, the yellow buses.
All right. But that center lane and then like Muirwood, you have some exits, Foothill Knolls, but right in front of this development, you might be kind of stuck.
Yeah, I think you bring up a good point, that when we widen the roadway, it does provide that opportunity to pull into the bike lanes, so that way an emergency vehicle can essentially drive down that center lane. And it is much better than, you know, a twenty-two-foot wide lane, you know, where you have eleven foot on each side. That becomes a very difficult travel for an emergency vehicle.
I had one more water shortage. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question. You mentioned you're avid cyclist, but I presume they would be of a higher caliber than maybe some average cyclists, right? Hence the advanced cyclist. But what about the high school kids, right? The context of what you've just spoken to. So if the ballards would help high schoolers feel comfortable to traverse Foothill, why are we not shooting for them versus the more advanced cyclists?
Yeah, sorry. To provide a little extra detail, what we see going to Foothill High School and what I think would occur is, as you travel northbound, you would be in the bike lane, right? If it was a protected bike lane, you would ride, as a high school student, you would ride, as opposed to riding on the sidewalk, you could ride in that bike lane up to the school. But when you leave, you're not crossing the street to ride southbound on the protected bike lane. I just don't, I don't see our students doing that. And so I think we could design a protected facility, but I'm not sure it's going to be used. And that's really kind of the question that has to be asked, right? And it could be asked to the high school students, would you, you know, actually cross this road to travel with traffic? Because what we see is they just ride on the sidewalk. They'll ride on the sidewalk all the way down. And I'm not convinced that they're going to then ride out with traffic just because there's a protected bike lane.
I hope you use the Maryland Kane Trail, because that is slick. Okay. All right, thank you. I've got one more issue that was raised. Maybe Ellen is the right one. A water shortage. This is a regional housing needs allocation site, and Mr. Hall is worried about, we don't have a lot of water.
So this, the sort of water supply was assessed as part of our housing element EIR. And to be transparent, the EIR did identify significant impact around water supply with buildout of all of the housing element sites under a very conservative evaluation that looked at sort of maximum buildout, maximum density, all of the sites developing, including ones that ultimately were not included in the evaluation. So at the time that we were writing the housing element EIR, the city was in the process of trying to figure out what to do about the PFAS issue and replacement of the twenty percent of groundwater, and had not yet come to a decision on how exactly that should be addressed. So the EIR made a conservative finding of impact around water supply. Since then, as you know, we have made a lot of progress on the replacement supply issues, including procuring water through purchase from Zone Seven, as well as advancing our well exploration process jointly with Zone Seven and the sort of Plan B potentially of having treatment. So with all of those factors in mind, I think we have a lot more certainty around our ability to address the supply. This is a relatively small increment of demand for this project. That's one of the earlier projects to come out of our housing elements. So our conclusion is that there is not a water supply issue for this project. We will obviously need to continue to assess that as part of our five-year water supply assessment updates and keep track of our water supply issues with Zone Seven and, you know, regional policies and things that might affect that picture. But for this project, staff does not have a concern with respect to water.
I'm going to take the lead. I didn't hear talking, talk about drought-tolerant plantings. Are we asking this developer to do drought-tolerant or low-water plantings?
Yeah, so the entire landscape plan is required to be compliant with our Welo Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, which does require drought-tolerant native species, low-water use plantings. So those Welo requirements are getting increasingly stringent. There's a very high level of water efficiency with these units with just, you know, compliance with the building code and low-flow fixtures and so on. So, you know, again, that helps reduce the water use of this project.
Except for that pool. Okay, good. Thank you. We have a chance for the applicant to come back and do any closing comments or statements before I close the public hearing. Do you have anything, Jim Summers or Pakistanza? Are you guys coming back? It's eleven-thirty. I want to make sure you're still awake. Hello.
You don't mind if Pat and I have a little tea party over there?
Yeah, tomorrow.
I think, I think the staff answered most of the things that I wanted to address, but I just want to suggest one thing, that having been on this project for the twenty-five years, I hear what people are talking about with emergency vehicle access and not being able to get through. But truly, with these three EVAs that we're putting in this project, it will help crossflow between the Foothill Knolls neighborhood and the Muirwood neighborhood and our neighborhood. Right now, Foothill Knolls has one exit, our proposed single exit, but we have three EVAs. One of those Prairie Drive on the south connects through to Foothill Knolls. So I think there's some benefits to both communities with the EVAs that we're providing as part of this project.
Great. Okay.
Any other questions for us? Thank you.
Seeing none. Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And to bring it back to the council, what would you like to do? Anybody want to start?
I can start, I guess, if you want. Okay, I just wanted to extend my thanks to Mr. Summers, Mr. Kostanza for meeting with me on multiple occasions to go over the project, answer questions. Not all of developers do that, so I do appreciate all of that. With this project, I really do like the senior community. I think there's a need for senior housing. I appreciate the affordable units being included and built within the project. There's a real benefit to our community for that, so I thank you for that. I like the fact there's no school impacts with the senior community, so no impact to our schools. About fifty percent less vehicle trips, and the traffic impact fees will be there if the data suggests the potential for a light at Foothill and Muirwood South. So I think that, I think a lot of the traffic issues, I know there were a lot of concerns of the community. I think, looking through all this whole enormous packet, questions, everything, I think that's been addressed. The flooding issues, I think, have too with the pipe sizing and all of that. So I appreciate all of those things being done. I really do like the trail connection. I think that is great. Emergency vehicle access, you mentioned that already. The Foothill Road improvements and the bike and pedestrian safety, I like the suggestions that were made and moving forward with that. That's important on Foothill Road, as we all know. Let's see. And I like that the flashing lights will be there, I believe, and there's just a lot of good things about it. The million dollars for the public safety, the fifty-foot setbacks, which you didn't have to do fifty feet, and I think that really does help. And that there's no vehicle access through the existing neighborhood surrounding it. I think that helps with the neighborhood. So I, a lot of things I like about this project for this area. You know, as some of the public may know, you know, we've been required to zone for housing by state law, mandated state law, and this is a housing element site, so. And I'm confident the numbers will, Pleasanton will receive those based on information we received tonight. So all in all, I thank you for, I know it's been a long time coming, and I thank you for all of the work on this. Thanks to staff for all their work as well. And I think all the concerns have been addressed, so thank you very much. I'm supportive.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to support, can I just say item number twenty-three?
With the amendments that, the agenda amendments that were attached in the second one.
So noted.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right. Comments?
Yes. I absolutely so pleased that, I mean, the community has been made as comfortable as could be. I mean, I know there's a couple of residents who are still just mourning the loss of their field, but everyone, I think the applicants spent a lot of time and sincere effort connecting with the neighbors and addressing everything that could be addressed. I feel very good about that. I think it's a lovely community. It's certainly a community that I would love to live in. And I think TJ and I said we're going to be neighbors there, so, yeah, yeah. And so I think, yeah, what, it is a great, it'll be a great asset to the community. So thank you for all the work that went into it, staff and applicants. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Nybert?
Yeah, I'd just like to add on to what was said. I think it's an outstanding project. It's one that shows what can happen whenever responsible developers work in concert with the city and its residents and the neighbors in a cooperative mode. We haven't always run into that in the city. And the fact that it's occurring here is one of the strengths, I think, of the type of project that really can be achieved in Pleasanton if all the players have their hearts in the right place. And I think that's the case here. With all of the public improvements that are being paid for by the developer with no fee credits, the Foothill Road safety improvements, the traffic impact fees, the improvement to the Maryland Kane Trail, and a million dollars for public safety, I see nothing, nothing to dislike. It's an outstanding project and, you know, that field's been there for a long time, and I've been in that neighborhood for a long time, too. And, yeah, it's progress. So, yeah, so I'll support the motion.
You don't live close enough where you have to recuse?
No, I don't. I'm not that close.
Just as a matter of note. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Balch?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat what my fellow council members have said, but I do agree with them about the community benefits, the amenities, and the well-thought-out plan and working with the community between the developer and the community. I will mention, not for this project, but just for the future, I do question age restricted in our future. There are younger families that need to be able to afford homes in our community. There is declining school enrollment in Pleasanton, and we do need people to be able to afford to live here. So as we think about age restricted in this particular case, there's a lot of pluses and a lot of reasons why that works here right now. There is a market and a need for it. But it just adds a community. We're beautiful when we have all of us here, so thank you.
Okay, I'm going to disclose that I met with the applicant and was here eight years, approximately eight years ago, when the project was rejected. And now we're back again. I'm very pleased to be here. I think it's a better project, and I think you're probably going to sell it for more money than your houses, so hopefully that'll benefit you. I will also disclose that I'm on the, I'm appointed by Alameda County Mayor's Conference to be on LAFCO's board, and so I will potentially be voting on this a second time, but in a different role. So I appreciate you taking care of the drainage, talking about the bike lanes and improving the bike lanes that are there now. And thank you, Jim, for all you've done to make a project that your neighbors, you can stand up and be proud of, that you've done everything to address the concerns of the neighbors within, within any kind of reason. And thank you, Pakistanza Junior. Now I know why PCJ stands for, but thank you for all that you've, both of you have done to make this an outstanding project. So with that, let's take a vote.
Councilmembers Arkin?
Aye.
Testa?
Aye.
Balch?
Aye.
Nybert?
Aye.
Mayor Brown?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously?
Another five-oh vote. All right. Okay, we've got matters initiated by council. Seeing none, or going on to council reports? Do you have anything briefly? Anybody want to start?
I think they're going to be light because everybody was traveling.
Did you want to start?
I can. Ava Community Energy Met related to...
Oh, what, hold on. Hi, excuse me, excuse me, hello, we're still having a meeting here. I know. It seems like your part's over, which is delightful, but we have just a little more to go. Thank you, Councilmember Balch.
Ava Community Energy had an energy procurement meeting on the ninth. On the eleventh, Stop Waste Program Administrative Committee has been discussing food diversion to use food that's lightly touched or used and make sure it's routed to food banks and other areas. And then also, just for everyone's knowledge, the Right to Repair Law in California became effective July first, and full lifecycle of products and the impact of the waste packaging and whatnot is being discussed at Stop Waste. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And anybody like to go next? Would you like to go next, sir?
Sure, I'll go next. Don't know if this was before or after our last meeting. The Valley Board of Directors meeting was held in June, which I attended. Also, going forward, the Alameda County Community, landfill, community monitor meeting was held in Livermore on July tenth, which I attended. Nothing really of urgency coming out of that meeting. And yes, light. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
Okay, yeah, let's see. I attended a couple LAFDA meetings, and I was disappointed that the Fourth of July celebration was canceled due to extreme heat. So did not attend that, did not have the opportunity to speak on the city's behalf, and was very disappointed because I flew my eighty-six-year-old mother into California to attend that. But it was definitely too hot. And then I, gosh, I think that, I had a, nope, that's it.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Arkin?
Yeah, just real quick, I had a Cal Cities Environmental Policy Committee meeting. I think that's been since our last, it was all virtual. That, the Concert in the Park for the Pleasanton one-hundred-and-thirty-year anniversary. We went to that. You forgot that. I know a few of us were there, and that was nice to celebrate Pleasanton's anniversary. I had an Innovation Tri-Valley meeting. We had a speaker on sustainability, and then we talked about some local issues with technology and innovation. And I think that's it. I've been on vacation. I was on vacation for a couple of weeks. So I did miss the mosquito abatement meeting, but getting filled in by the chair of that. Don't know if I missed anything else, but it was a nice break for us this time between meetings. So I know a few of us took advantage of being on vacation, so I think that's it. I know it's been a little lighter lately.
I am in mine.
Most important one being, I did attend an A-BAG meeting, and that was actually at the same time as the Cal Cities Housing Meeting, but that one was virtual Zoom, so I actually attended both at the same time. And I also did attend an AI Summit that was in Dublin, and I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, if there's anything. So I attended Alameda County Mayor's Conference, and as was mentioned earlier, what did we talk about? We talked about rising sea level, which affects some communities more than Pleasanton since we're land-bound. since we're, we're landbound. I chaired the LAFCO, Alameda County LAFCO meeting, and what would be of interest to this group is that there was unanimous support for annexation of Parcel 39 and 40, which was a split vote when it was here at this council. So those are the two items that I think are, are most of interest. So council adjournment, Councilmember Nybert, do you have our words for closing?
Yes, I do. The Pleasanton City Council adjourns this meeting with a tribute to our nation's men and women serving in the military, and with gratitude for every United States veteran who has bravely answered the call to serve. Further, we wish to honor the memories of those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in conflicts both past and present in defense of our country.
All right, this meeting's adjourned.